And if you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
What allegiance to the blood of the United States of America. If you were in power in the ocean sands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, roll call, please, city.
Counselor Hughes here. Counselor McElroy.
Here.
Counselor Metcalf.
Here.
Counselor Prokop.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Tenbush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwine.
Here. Thank you very much for that. We are at our first citizen and community group comment. I have none in front of me. Do I have any online? No? Okay, thank you for that. We are now at the consent agenda. Are there any questions about the consent agenda, anything you would like to move forward? Or anything to that effect before I ask for a motion? Nope, not seeing anybody. Okay, can I have a motion on the floor to accept the consent agenda, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, I prefer second. First and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda passes. Thank you very much. Moving right along, we are at department and committee reports. So I will start off with Jerry. You have anything to say?
Yeah, nothing.
Okay. Jonathan?
I don't got nothing pressing. I know that traffic to poke safety has been working really hard on the speed hump thing. And they came up with another option called a speed cushion, but I'll have more information on the next meeting for that.
All right, great. Thank you. Eddie?
Uh, yeah, the school board met last week and so just a quick building and facilities report. The cool, clean air grant is on schedule for the gym and the high school. The middle school project is complete and on budget with the mini splits in the upstairs classrooms. Um, the reunification process went well. Seventy-seven middle school students averaged a time of four minutes per student to be reunified with their parents. Enrollment right now is at one thousand eight hundred ninety-nine, but that is not including Summit. And then, um, I, the superintendent report was extremely extensive. Superintendent Carpenter gave probably about an hour-long report. So I would just encourage, a lot of it had to do with bond and next steps and a myriad of other things. And so I would just encourage people who are really interested in listening to that to go online to YouTube. Um, the school district has everything posted. And I'd just say refer to that because we'd be here all day if I had to go over and over that. Um, next year, they are expecting one hundred and sixty-three kindergarteners, and that is the largest incoming kindergarten class Estacada has ever seen. We have more special needs students coming in, so growth is not stopping. Um, so again, it's, uh, there's a need for some changes to be made in the school district to allow for classrooms for their students and uh, two board members have resigned. One Director Johnston, um, it's due to, he has moved. Um, he is no longer in his zone. And then Director Shabahara has stepped down. She's got two twin students who are in the district and um, just kind of moving on. This is just the end of, you know, she's kind of wrapping up this chapter of her life. So, um, they'll have two openings in those zones for anyone that's interested for appointment. Uh, I believe applications for the appointment will be online soon. And yeah, that's all I've got on that.
Good. Thank you for that. We will do the city manager's report now.
All right, I have a little PowerPoint up there. And I have, uh, added City Attorney to this report. So if Peter wants to stop me at any minute and weigh in on something, feel free. First of all, I wanted to, um, get back to a question that Mayor Drinkwine had asked me, and I attempted to answer at the last meeting, but didn't quite have the right, um, uh, amount of detail that I think that the mayor was looking for. So, um, as far as the our original wastewater treatment plant, kind of looking back in the day, nineteen sixty-two, when that was designed, uh, it was, it was, it was designed to certain flow standards, but if you look at, um, if we make some assumptions, um, which a conservative assumption would be that each person would use about a hundred gallons a day, a hundred gallons of water a day. Um, and actually, I, I notated where I found out the EPA, an average American uses about eighty-two gallons of water at home. Um, so, uh, so about a hundred is what we're making the assumption with. And if you use that assumption, then in nineteen sixty-two, that plant could have served thirty-four hundred and fifty people in the service area. Um, there was not nearly that number of people. However, according to our, um, comp plan, I think in two thousand, we were, we figured we'd be at, I can't remember how many, in the year two thousand, we were going to be at like eight thousand people or something like that. Ten, that was it, ten thousand? Ten thousand people in the year two thousand, which we have not quite achieved yet. Uh, so they were planning ahead. And then we did an upgrade in, uh, nineteen eighty-nine. And that, if you use that same assumption of about a hundred gallons per day per person, it could have served about fifty-four hundred people. And we recently crossed that mark, um, with the number of people that are residing in Estacada. Um, so hence, we are designing and preparing to construct the new wastewater plant. And according to the thirty percent design, that one is geared to serve over twelve thousand people. So hopefully that kind of puts in perspective how we've been planning ahead and growing and, and when we hit those numbers or get close to it, we didn't, we didn't quite hit, we hadn't hit the thirty-four fifty when we did the upgrade in the eighties, but um, just kind of wanted to throw those out there. Are there any questions about that? If I have answers, but.
No, you did very well on that. I thank you for getting those numbers for me. So we have something to work with. I think that kind of answers a lot of questions where we're at and where we're going.
Makes it a little more concrete, maybe for.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you for that. Uh, are there any questions from councilman?
Just one quick question. That's the, the phase one of the wastewater treatment plant with the expansion that could come later. Do you know what capacity gets added? That, that'd be the only question I have is
Okay.
When we do the phase two or phase three to increase, expand it, what the capacity is going to be when we add different phases in there?
You make myself a note and I will, um, I'll get back to you on that. I should know that off the top of my head, but I do not have it in my head right now. Okay. Okay, um, next slide. Um, we wanted to let you know that we are hopefully making it easier for folks to track our water production this year and water usage this summer, especially for July and August. Um, that chart that is right there, um, it was updated through last week or through part of last week, um, and we're, we are working on updating it on a daily basis. Um, so if you go to, you see a more current version, if you went to the city website, it's right on the front page. Um, and it will show you what we're producing. That orange line at the top is what our, what we can produce each day. And then the blue line is what we've been using. Um, and we're promoting some free landscape water audits through Clockmouth River Water Providers. Um, we'll have somebody from Clockmouth River Water Providers at the next meeting to talk to you about conservation. And hopefully with, um, well, not hopefully, with conservation, it will not only, um, take less of a toll on our water plant. We're requiring us to upgrade, you know, not quite as soon as we would necessarily need to, uh, which is expensive. But also should save, it'll save people money on their summertime water bills. Now you try to, um, gauge, am I using too much water? Not, you know, I need to keep my grass green for the HOA, but I don't want to overwater. And then you just kind of see your bill trickle up there like the power bill does in the wintertime. But, um, hopefully this will, if we can be more educational, let people know, you know, how much water we really are using as a community. It will help people to, um, really uh, monitor that usage and have, feel like they have more control and they can still achieve what their goals are uh, and their quality of life, but also have more control over their, their water usage. So thanks for helping us with that. Um, next slide, just a quick update on the next wa- high-level water reservoir. I got one call last week because the, there's a notice for a public hearing that the county published because the next, we have one high-level water reservoir right now. It's outside the urban growth boundary. Uh, because it has to be at a certain elevation in order to serve, uh, the higher elevated homes in, into the north and in Estacada. And so this will provide redundancy. If something had happened to that water reservoir that we currently have or to the pipe that, um, is running from that, then we can have some folks without water. So this will produce, provide additional storage and redundancy for the north area of town. And just a note, in case it's concerning, if people get noticed from the county, it is located outside of our UGB due to the elevation need. But the city cannot expand outs. It's not like the city is, we're not annexing property or moving in that direction, that, that UGB line. Um, the one on the east is Lawrence Road, and that is our hard boundary. Um, so we just wanted people to be clear on that. And if you have any, if people have questions, they can feel free to call. But that's a picture of one of our, um, we have two up above, um, Edge Hill, and that's one of them right there. So I kind of, they can be green, they can be tan, they just, they're a little blah, but.
A little water.
So we're, I'm currently having conversations with the county about how much of a vegetation break we need around our tank. The county standings are, uh, standards are thirty feet in the front, thirty feet in the back, and ten feet on each side. Um, under their code, but the county planner that's looking at this is saying thirty feet in all directions. So, um, and that's, that's because this is in its rural urban fire interface. So I did a, a dive into Senate Bill three sixty, which is what created that thirty-feet fire break requirement. And it's really designed for residential, uh, fire protection. So for residences, so the structure under that Oregon administrative rule is defined as a home or an accessory building um, that is more than five hundred square feet. So our, my argument is it's not applicable to a water tank. And then the other purpose of that, uh, Senate bill was that these structures would add fuel to the fire because they were wooden. And obviously, we have a fireproof metal water storage unit that would actually assist firefighters in the event of a, um, fire. So we don't think that that standard should apply to us and, um, the planning director and I are having those conversations in-house, but hopefully we can get that resolved. Um, there's a hearing at the end of July. And, uh, so we've got a little bit more time to get them on the same page.
Thank you. All right, next slide. A quick update on Hillway. The extension of Hillway from the end of Hillway on Cemetery over to Hillway in Campanella. Um, the bid open, that's going to be going out to bid and the estimate, the proposed date for that bid opening will be July eighteenth, which means the bid award would come to the council on July twenty-second. That's still, I would say slightly fluid, just in case, um, we, uh, you know, might be, I think, we couldn't really push much past July eighteenth. Um, but just kind of wanted to give you a heads up that that is moving forward. We're working on wrapping up permits. DEQ has a whole new process. They, to turn in a permit for that I have to get involved in, so that makes it a little more complicated for Karen McLeod, but, um, we're working, moving that forward. So we'll be excited to bring that to you. Yes.
Does the contractor that's working on the main cit- the Main Street project have the capacity to do that project?
I do not know because they have other jobs they're doing right now, but I would love it if they would give us a bid.
Just wonder if they're going to be bidding it.
Um, I haven't spoken to them directly about it, but, um, they do a lot of work in the area and they did fantastic working on Main Street. So I would love to do more work with them. All right, and then I think this is.
Before you move on.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Yeah, are, are you going to go ahead and file for, I, I might, you might have said this, I just want to make sure, okay, for an extension in advance for the water work?
Yes, well.
So the tight timeline here?
It is, it is a tight timeline, um, and that will be part of that permit process because they're in water work window, which won't take long to do actually, but it's limited to July fifteenth through August thirtieth or August thirty-first. Um, and so as soon as we are ready to move forward, we'll be in talks about that as well, just in case we need that extension. We did get an extension when we were doing Wade Creek Park. Um, and unless it's, uh, from what I understand, unless it's an extremely wet year, um, they don't have an issue with that and we should be moving through that. So, yeah, thank you for asking. All right, um, quick question for you. We're going to schedule an Urban Renal Meeting in July. Got a new year coming up. We have a grant application that's being submitted. Um, and so we'd like to have a meeting on July eighth, but since we moved your meetings to start at six, should we start the Urban Renal Meeting at five-thirty or should we just start, should we not go earlier than six and just start things at six? So kind of wanted, if everybody wants to weigh in. I mean, we're, we're good, the earlier the better, but.
I like earlier the better.
Same. Yes. Can you, everybody get here by five-thirty?
Jerry, I know you're looking at that as a hard one to get here.
Yeah, if it's, if the, there's consensus, I'll, I'll, I'll agree to it and, um, you know, it's a five-thirty and I'll, I'll get here.
You can make it by five-thirty. And Jonathan, I know your schedule is kind of changing too, but, um.
I can make it.
You can make it. Okay. Right, so we won't go any earlier than five-thirty, but if we can start the Urban Renal Meeting at five-thirty, then we'll get rolling with your regular meeting at six.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. And if anything changes, just let us know because I know, um, everybody's got to take care of their own things as well. Um, lastly, just wanted to say our market study is still underway. We have five hundred and eighty-seven responses so far, which is fantastic. It's going to be open until July fourteenth, and you can find the survey on the website. Um, and if anybody who is here tonight wants to pick up a paper copy, there's some over on the, um, stand over there, but um, real easy to just click through it if you go to our website. So keep sending us information. Uh, it doesn't mean that things are going to change overnight, but it helps to know for the economic development purposes and plans. And as we're moving forward, you know, what people are really looking for in the community. So, and any other questions?
Um, when the folks come out for the next meeting to, to, to talk about our, our water conservation, is that the appropriate time and the appropriate people to discuss, um, water rights and increasing water rights? Or just kind of the explanation as to why we haven't been able to increase our water rights?
She might, Christine from Clockmouth River Water Providers might be able to speak to that a little bit, but I really need to get somebody, a more, um, somebody who actually deals with the water rights, I think, to come out. And Peter might have an idea of who or, um, Elena and I had been, Elena had been in contact with somebody that she and Chris were talking to as well. So, um, yes, but we can, I'm going to add that to the list too. Water right discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Counselor Prokop?
Um, I was just wondering if we had an update on the splash pack?
Yes, um, that is a multi-phase approach. Um, the, the water line has been tapped. We had to tap the water line to get a, a larger, um, water supply. And that is done. You can see the, the patch needs to be patched back on the road in front of Wade Creek Park. Um, it's at Karen McLeod right now for some engineering. We didn't want to get into the middle of it with any more surprises. So we're just going to have it engineered. As soon as it's done, Don is planning to put that out to bid. Get some quotes for that and that will be coming to you. Yes. Thank you.
And then, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Where can, can the community find more information about the free water audits?
That, if you go to our, the homepage of the city website, you'll see the chart there, the graph there that shows our current water production. If you click on that, takes you to our water conservation page and there's, um, information there to get, to find out about the free water audits. They, they just did a program at the library on Saturday that didn't have too many people attend, but they had a really good discussion. And, um, so hopefully with Christine coming out and next time, we'll start to get more interest in people that you do, it's, it's good if they're home, if people are home, when the person comes out, so you can talk about the water system and they're not just inspecting your water system when you're not there. But hopefully that, uh, people can, their interest will be raised and they'll be able to schedule those. So, but yeah, homepage of the website, click on the chart and that will take you to the conservation page.
Peter, you have something?
Yeah, so as you guys noticed, we're, we've been talking a lot about rates. Um, one of the things that I noticed is that the, the school district hasn't gotten an, they haven't asked for an increase in their construction excise tax since that program wanted to place. And they're actually, they're quite a bit below where they could be. So that's something that would need to be initiated by the school board itself. But, um, as they look at, uh, sources, uh, we have enough permitted housing that it's, it would not be an insignificant amount of money that they would get if they increased it to the, they don't have to go to the max, they could go to a lower number. But, um, just wanted, eh, for those that are interested, um, that was something I had noticed and wanted to let you guys know about that.
Great. Yeah, I want to circle back to the, the Hillway thing just because, I mean, we're working with such a tight timeline here. And then sometimes it can be challenging to find say contractor that has availability to move on this in this short of a window. Are we talking backup plans for, for if this cannot get done again this year? Is there anything that we can do to, God forbid, like, let's hope that this code closes, but are we confident even that we can find a contractor that's, I mean, because you're talking about a timeline and moving in in two or three weeks to perform the work and then be out of the water, right? So that's just a really narrow gap for something we haven't even bid yet.
It's getting very tight. Uh, we're feeling very confident that we're going to get some good bids and people are ready to go to work. The, the amount of the, and Kurt might want to speak to this a little bit. I'm not sure if he wants to tonight, but, um, the, and I can have somebody else provide another update, but, um, the amount of in-water work is actually very minimal. And so that can be done right away first, and then the rest of the project will be built around it. Um, so we're confident that it's going, it's going forward, um, and that if we need that extension, we'll be able to get the extension. Um, so we haven't made backup plans for like doing it later in the year or next year or anything. But we're still planning to push, push it forward.
Yeah. So I would just hate to see this be another missed thing, especially on finally we get approval, but then now it's a contractor issue, right? So.
Okay. Yeah, I'll follow up on that again and get, see if I can get more information.
Until we can find out when the bid window opens.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kurt has.
And everyone's saying, you know, it remains a very tight time and you've been working for a year and a half to get this permit. We still have to see, still we're going to bid at this many, we would give this permit. A challenge.
All right, anything more?
That's all for now. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, moving along, we are now going to close the city council and go into the public hearing. Uh, the public hearing will be on ordinance twenty twenty-four zero zero two and ordinance amending title sixteen Development Estacada Municipal Code, uh, political signs. Um, do any members of the council wish to abstain or declare expertise contacts?
Do any of us need to if we're going to be running again? Melanie, you were going to check on that.
Do you want to speak louder?
Yeah, so my instructions to staff was not to collect money from the, for, for, under the prior scheme because, um, there's, would be serious legal risk with doing that. So whether or not someone's running for office and whether or not they would, they would want to have a large sign, those are, those are like theoretical conflicts of interest, but not actual. Um, the city had not been collecting funds for a permit anyway. So we're getting rid of the permit program. So I don't, I don't know that it would be, I don't know that it would be a financial benefit for anyone because it's, it's all, um, it's not an actual conflict of interest because someone can run for office without having any large signs. And we weren't collecting, we weren't permitting or collecting funds on yard signs. And that's, some people run for offices and don't have a single sign. So, um, you know.
This year, we didn't collect, in May, for the May election, we didn't collect fees, so it wouldn't be any change, um, even if you adopt this, uh, this code. So.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Alan, take your way.
Thank you. Good evening, council, mayor. Um, I will present Planning Commission's recommendation on ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two on political sign, um, the code amendments. Okay, the applicant is city of Estacada. Basically, the pro- proposal is to amend, um, the Estacada Municipal Code, Chapter sixteen seventy-two, uh, dealing with signs to remove permitting fees for all political signs, uh, to allow signs up to thirty-two square feet on commercial and industrial properties and to provide for the confiscation and the storage of signs that do not conform to the code. And for a little background, council directed staff to draft these amendments that remove the fee for political signs, but staff found some other problems um, with the code and just sought to address those in these, in these amendments. So the ordinance specifics, uh, the current code requires a fee for political signs, um, above four square feet in area. And that fee would be removed for signs up to thirty-two square feet with these amendments. Um, the size standards are currently unclear for political signs, but these amendments address that, uh, the standards are clarified that, um, there's a four-foot square maximum, or square foot maximum on residential properties, and then a thirty-two square foot maximum on commercial and industrial properties that are not in residential areas. And I will talk a little bit more about what that means just a bit. And currently, there's no provision for the confiscation and, um, retrieval of signs that are out, um, out of compliance with the code. Um, these amendments would provide for removal with twenty-four-hour notice. And confiscate confiscated signs will be held for thirty days by the city. Okay, and in the planning commission report, you can read in detail how this proposed ordinance meets or supports all the applicable sections of our chapter sixteen one twenty-eight on amendments. The statewide planning goals and the Estacada comprehensive planning goals. Okay, so I'd like to bring, uh, to council's attention, um, one particular section of the draft amendments that's related to the allowed si- size of political signs on commercial properties that are located near residential properties. And specifically this section here highlighted, um, yeah, I'll just read it. So on a property whose primary use is commercial or industrial, political sign may not be larger than thirty-two square feet unless said property fronts the same public right-of-way as one or more adjacent or directly opposing properties whose primary use is residential. In such cases, a political sign may not be larger than four square feet. So basically, all that is to say that a commercial or industrial property can have a thirty-two square foot political sign unless it's directly next to or facing a residential property. So I'm going to just kind of walk you through what that means. Just made this little graphic to help illustrate it. So that sees a hypothetical commercial property. In this case, it's surrounded on both sides and in front by commercial properties, so no residential properties in those places. And that would be allowed a thirty-two square foot political sign. Even if everything else around it is residential, it would still be allowed a thirty-two square foot sign if it, if it, um, was not bounded on other side or in front of, by residential property. However, if there's residential property to either side or directly in front, it would only be allowed four square foot sign. So that is what that, what this language basically does. So just a question for council regarding this section of the proposed code. Do you think this wording should remain as is, be changed, or be removed? Um, the planning commission had some reservations uh, with including it, but ultimately felt that it offered more protection to residents than not including it. And so, uh, the planning commission recommendation was to approve the ordinance amending, um, EMC, Chapter sixteen seventy-two, amending those standards regarding political signage.
And then the, the other piece is the max size. So our thought was the two feet by two feet, that's kind of residential in character, what people would expect in a residence. Um, the max size of thirty-two would be like an eight by four foot sign if you guys want. If you think that's too large or want to go smaller, we could do a, a six by four, something like that. Um, you know, at, at some point, because some of these properties are, are not immediately adjacent to the highway, they need to be a certain size just so people can see them. Um, which is, you know, and it's also this limited duration that people can keep the signs up. So it's a couple months before the election and then they need to be taken down within fifteen days. So, uh, those are, those are the other things that I wanted to flag for you, um, just to think about.
Okay, so next steps would be public comment. Um, and then if council has any questions for staff, ask those and discuss. And then council can make its decision with motion and discussion and vote.
Okay, um, well, on here I have, there is any correspondence regarding this application. I don't think I have any.
There's not, no.
Okay, I will now read a statement. Um, a statement about evidence presented at the hearing, an issue which may be the basis for appeal. Kaluba must be raised prior to the close of the record at the final eventuary hearing on that specific rec, uh, application. Such issue shall be raised.
on that specific rec- uh, application, such issue shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of an issue to be raised at the hearing or in person, or by letter, or failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford Luba and the parties an adequate opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to Luba on that issue. Okay, do any members of the audience wish to speak on this? And I don't have any speaker forms, so I'm not seeing any. All right, uh, staff, you've put everything in that you, you need to put.
Yeah.
Okay, um, at this time, I will now close the public hearing. And reopen the city council. Now that we want to vote on this at this point, or? Okay. You've uh, might give any.
I'm for removing the language about the residential commercial if, if they're in combination. There just seems like it's going to be a headache for people that are trying to figure out where they can put the sign as well as just busy up the city staff with people calling and saying, well, this particular situation, is this okay? Just muddies the water, I think, and it's for such a short period of time, I'm for taking the language out personally.
And that, that was uh, the big debate of the planning commission as well, too. Um, I, I'd say they were split, you know, with uh, with some feeling just the same way that it would be simpler if it were allowed on commercial and not on residential and not worry about the who's abutting up to what property. And part of the question, too, is who's going to monitor that as well, too?
Yeah, enforcement would be much more difficult, I think, with that language in there.
But ultimately, what they, they agreed upon, and it was a unanimous approval of, of this as is, was that uh, that they just wanted to protect the residential, I don't know if you could chime in anymore, the residential folks, that they wouldn't have to come out of their house and look at a big sign for uh, sixty days plus fifteen afterwards.
Yeah, yeah, that was the, that, yeah, that was the impetus for, for crafting it. Also, we just wanted to include it in there so that you had a chance to um, yeah, just thumbs up or thumbs down. It just seemed easier to have something in there than for you guys to sit up here and try to like craft something on the fly, so that's why it's there.
Maybe if we're going to keep it in there, we could simplify the language to explain so that the staff, city staff's not having to explain that to everybody that has questions about it. Because just reading that, um, I think a lot of people are going to have a hard time understanding.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's something you can do relatively easy. Do we need to make a change in the statement or?
Yeah, diagram like you showed on the presentation might be.
Yeah, but where, do, do we have ideas of who would be impacted here in town if?
Yeah, that's a good question. So there are some properties like up the hill a bit, like um, think of like grannies or something like that, where there's, there are residences across the street from that. Yeah, in a residential commercial zone, general commercial zone, there are a few properties. Um, I don't think it's a ton of properties, but it is um, yeah, there are properties that, that, that fit that, fit that case.
Like I'm, I'm ultimately going back to your uh, recommendation, just in favor of simplifying it by myself. Commercial versus residential.
Hey. Yeah. Any else want to weigh in on that?
I like the idea of having maybe just a sheet of paper with a diagram that is like a literally working model of an example that you could just forward to somebody if they did call, or that you could just send out in advance or something like that, that would just cover your basis and then like, just agreeing with you guys on simplifying, then it removes the need to have a conversation about it. Here's a working example, if it fits or it doesn't.
So you're saying you would be in favor of keeping the language, but just including a um, diagram, okay? Could do that.
Jerry, I'll let you weigh in on this, since you were the anti-sign guy.
Um, I'm still the anti-sign guy.
Okay, all right. I just thought I'd give you an opportunity.
Still, still to me, it's, you know, visual pollution, um, I don't like it, and I definitely don't like uh, us allowing larger signs. Just personal, I'm going to stand my ground on that.
Okay. And, and are we allowing larger signs or are we n- not charging for larger signs? I want to clarify that.
We're not, yeah. Well, so we're right, we're, we have the ability to limit size to a certain extent. Um, I wouldn't want to limit below what ODOT uh, allows because the more restrictive, because political signs have special protection um, as free speech. Uh, because it's considered like the most efficient way for someone to put out their beliefs. And then people that know that person drive by their house, say, oh, they're supporting so-and-so, maybe I will or I won't. You know, depending on if they agree with that person. So uh, Justice Stevens wrote the opinion on that when he was on the Supreme Court and they get special protection. So we can do time, place, and manner restrictions, but we have to be reasonable. And if we're going below what ODOT uh, allows, like on interstate highways, um, I, we, we then run the risk of uh, becoming the target for a, a free speech type of organization. So that's, that's the only caveat that I would say. Um, and generally, like the smaller signs are considered more conducive with, you know, the residential character. And the large signs, large signs are expensive, too, so unless you're at a, unless you're at a location that's going to get a lot of traffic, uh, people aren't just going to be, you know, plastering up thirty-two square foot signs because they're very expensive, I've made, so um, we can, we can restrict it more, we can't restrict it to the point where Jerry would, would want us to restrict it. Getting, getting a call from the, the ACLU.
Yeah. No, I, 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 go ahead, Mel.
Um, I just had just a thought on the expense of the signs. Um, there might be, if we do this, kind of protecting the residential areas a little more, um, we could have the diagram in the code, but my concern is that um, folks are going to order their signs, you know, on the commercial property, they're going to put it up, and then we're going to have to go explain to them while you have residential across, you know, the code's been changed. So unless we like, we could try to get the word out, but sometimes people, they don't um, pay that much attention until it liter- it's impacting them directly. So we could, we could go either way, um, but it, they could find themselves, you know, the first time around real being caught off guard by, oh, I have a residence across the street. Um, so now I have to find someplace else to put my big sign, although sometimes businesses don't necessarily put up signs. Some, some do and some kind of stay away, so it, I, it's hard to tell how it's going to play out until we get there, but just kind of that thought that people might, they probably wouldn't really realize until coenforcement shows up and says, hey, you don't qualify.
And two, when you say distance, how far a distance are we talking about? If there's a residential, a block down or two blocks down, but the business is still facing that direction, where does that come into play?
Like, okay, so it'd be directly facing, so basically if you thi- think of the property line is jutting straight out at a right angle, if it's, if the residence is within that kind of the frontage directly across the street. So it's written so that it's just, it has to be directly across the street. So there's a, you know, nothing here and then a house here, it qualifies, it'd be fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So basically, everything on, everything, all the businesses on Sixth, on, on Sixth up there um, west of um, Broadway would all be, I guess west of Maine would all be excluded from.
Likely, I didn't look at every single one, but I know that several of them was, yeah. Yeah. Like, and up weight a bit, like Galani Granite, I think there's.
That was the only example that came to my mind, that would really, I think, benefit, everything else is far enough set back and stuff like that along that quarter. If, if that's the case where we're getting into that, I'm in favor of just removing the language and allow it. I mean, I think the community could use the reminder that it's the season to vote and voice their opinion as well, so our voter turnout number showed that.
Yeah, it's true, it is, it is not a lot of residences that would be affected by it.
Okay, guys, sounds like we've made some valid points. Can I get a motion? I already did, yeah, I'm back in the, back at the meeting.
Did I really miss that?
I missed it last time.
So I motioned to approve the, the amended code section with the, with removing, with the addition of removing the highlighted segment of the code.
A second.
So I got a first and second on that, uh, let's do a roll call vote on that.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes. Like that Jerry and that no over there. Such a persistent little guy. All right.
I can't say you're not dedicated.
Yeah, standing my ground, sorry. Okay. We are now into council business, my friends. First on council business, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one two, a resolution adopting and revise CIP list of system development charge for the wa- water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation, and park systems. Uh, city engineering Kurt McLeod will give us a little info on that.
Probably, you probably have to turn on that microphone there, Kurt.
Do you need that, or should I talk a lot?
No.
We want to hear your voice on record, Mr.
Is, is this on?
Okay.
I, I will sit if you don't mind. So we're in the process of updating the STCs, as you're well aware. You know, the STCs is really, it's a dynamic document that can be modified frequently. You know, there's really no uh, large process that you have to go through to do it. We can adjust the projects, we can adjust project costs uh, without uh, extensive advertisement time or public hearings. Um, there, there's provisions in the statute for two different options. One is if you're going to change the methodology, which is how we allocate the cost, then you're required to send out a ninety-day notice and have it published early. But if you're only adjusting fees or adjusting the capital improvement listing, you send out a notice thirty days prior to just the people who have requested uh, notice. And if they request a public hearing, you have a public hearing, otherwise it's simply just a council action to review and adopted by resolution or ordinance, the updated STC. So that's the process we're pursuing today, is that we have only gone back to adjust the cost and the capital improvement plan listings. And we're consolidating all five of your STCs into one document. So your current STCs have been scattered about from the year two thousand up to twenty twenty-three. Now we'll bring them all to one current uh, consumer price index, so they'll be able to adjust these in the future with, using the same factor and make it easy for Sadie. So with that, I wanted to just walk you through each one and, and primarily answer questions, so I think you've had a chance to read through it. I try to make STCs understandable and defensible, those are the key things. Uh, we want, I try to make it to where we're, we're taking the value of all of our existing improvements plus the cost of estimated things we're going to need in the future to serve growth. And I add those together, then you divide it by the entire population of build-out. So we determine the value of what you own now, we determine what do we need to serve build-out, and then we add it together and divide it by build-out. So uh, build-out or capacity of the system, so that the numbers at any rate are taking the total value of existing and the cost of needed improvements and allocated equally to existing residents and, and new residents. So we don't collect the money from new, from existing residents, we only collect the funds from new residents because existing residents don't pay an STC fee. But they do pay monthly rates, we pay our, our enterprise funds to operate each utility, so. With that, I don't know if you want to, do you want to go through the STC? Would you like to go through the cover letter I sent, so?
Let's, let's have the cover letter first and then we'll go through.
Okay, all right. Um, then first we'll start with, we'll start with the water STC. What we've done with water, the, the big difference in water since the last STC, our last STC was in two thousand and ten. And you had sufficient capacity to get you through a twenty-year planning window. Now you do not, so we're projecting costs in this STC to expand the water plant, secure additional water rights, uh, plus pay for the continued distribution grid all the way out to Deuce Road. So this one, we're proposing an eleven point two percent increase. Um, the things we can include in the fee are city revenue, so if the city is spending your current revenues, if you have your fund and STC balance or, or rate revenues, we can include that in the fee. If you're borrowing money, we have to exclude that from the fee because borrowed money, the rate payers, a new connection rate payer, he's going to be paying that debt service through his rates. So we can't charge him when we borrow money. You know, that would be double charging him. If we charged him his STC proportionate share for what we're borrowing money for, and then charge him later as his proportionate share of the debt service, we'd be double charging him for the same asset. So water, the big thing on water, I think, was the water plant. We're saying the water plant's going to increase to, I, I, I say three point five MGD, and that's only because I anticipate point five MGB would be the redundancy, so really your production would be a three MGD plant. You right now have a two point six MGD water right. Uh, we've been promoting since the last master plan update that you should be working with Oregon Water Resource Department to uh, use re- reclaimed water, recycled water. So once we, we take water out of the river, we treat it, we put it back in the river, the water, any, all the water we put back in the river is not allocated. The rest of the climate and the service allocated, so there's no other water rights to secure. But the water we put back is not allocated, so we have very good records of what we put back into the river. We've been promoting, in fact, Elena and Melanie and I have met with OWRD, and I thought they were very uh, supportive. So, a- and I recall them saying that there's other communities in Oregon that are doing that. So it doesn't require a water right, but it would allow us to extract the amount of water we're putting back in. So, and right now we're at two point six MGD, we're projecting you need three MGD, and taking four hundred thousand gallons back out of the river is a reasonable number, so. So um, I show a little table there where we fall, I show your existing rate, I show your proposed new rate. So you're, you're on the low end, you're not high water rates, water STCs, so. Any question on water?
Nope.
Sanitary sewer, this one may be more surprising in that, but as I mentioned, you know, we're moving into a big wastewater project. Uh, but we don't have a lot of cash to put into it, so we're going to have a, we're going to have a loan through the state to, that will be reimbursed with rate revenues. So um, so the sanitary sewer wasn't proposed to increase dramatically, in fact, it's, it's probably the least increase of all of them. The last one was done in two thousand and three, Sadie's been making adjustments every year, so I think the number's been very good. She's been very, very aggressive in keeping that number where it needs to be. Even though we had those few years where we were limited to three percent, I think somehow we caught back up, so we're in good shape. So the one thing that's a, of significance with this is as you make debt service payments, the value of your reimbursement will go up. And so that increased value gets reallocated back to the STC. So even though your, your consumer cost index or the construction cost index, we use the engineering news record construction cost index, even though that might show an increase of three or four percent, you also will reclaim the principal that you've paid off, so when you lower the debt, your asset value increases. So the, the effective increase of what you might see on STCs over the next twenty years will be higher than the construction cost index because of the reclaimed asset value, so. Um, wastewater, we're, we're right in the middle, so you see all the communities we added there, we listed. Most of these came from, I think, Steve Donovan's work, and we added a few to it. Any question on wastewater? That, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that was the one that stood out to me the most, especially with parks, and we haven't gotten there yet, but that being so high in terms of a proposal. It's taking a step back, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, the, you're, you're speaking, the language you're speaking, you know, the, what, what the regulations say. But the fact that this is going to be such an impact to Estacada here is, is there, i- it just, it doesn't make sense. Is there anything, is there any way that this can be uh, increased more or, or adjusted more?
I had to make some approximation of what I thought we would pay. So if you look at the sanitary sewer um, in the, in the book here, and you'll see how much cash, and I had to just estimate what I thought the city's asset would go into as cash. That number, if you feel like we can provide more funds towards that thirty-five million dollar project, then we can increase, you know, the amount we're going to allocate to future users.
And assuming grants don't count.
Grants don't count, grants and loans don't count, yeah, grants, loans, and contributions. So if a developer builds a mainline for you, those contributions don't count, yeah. So one thing to consider is our current wastewater treatment plan, we're essentially going to reclaim the. We're essentially going to reclaim the land and we're really starting over. We're building a new plant for everybody, the existing users and new users. So the existing users have, you know, paid for the existing plant, but they paid for it back in nineteen eighty eight or through that twenty year period after nineteen eighty eight. So it's not unreasonable that these costs are shared by everyone. By not having him in the SDC, the costs are allocated through rate revenues. You know, debt service will be made by all of the users. So it's, I know it's painful when you think of a thirty five million dollar project, yet the SDCs are not substantially increased. So we don't have the ability to just borrow money and increase the SDC as I'm sure you can imagine. We, if we went out and borrowed a hundred million dollars, the SDCs go to twenty thousand dollars. You just don't have the ability to do that.
What you're saying makes sense on paper.
Yeah, I know, I know. But one thing to consider is that our existing facility is really is at the end of its life. And so we're really starting over with everyone. So so the cash is the only thing that's reducing that cost allocation.
Okay.
And there was, there was just uh, the Supreme Court just decided uh case on SDCs kind of with the Nolan Dolan in that framework. So they looked at Nexus in in rough proportionality. And it was a community in California that had a twenty six thousand dollar transportation SDC and it was struck down. So I think that SDCs are getting more and more scrutiny and we have to really make sure that we, and that was a it it was a twenty six thousand just transportation SDC on a double Y trailer. Um, and the there was no nexus between, I mean, they they couldn't demonstrate the math for why that um unit would have a twenty six thousand dollar impact on the system. And I I think like now's the time to be kind of really careful to make sure that we have a strong, which Kurt did, but we have a very strong record on um why these are where they are. And then, as you can see, we're uh way below some of these jurisdictions. I think Westland's SDCs on a single family house at this point are are over sixty thousand dollars. I think the last I heard it was like sixty six thousand a house.
Yeah. And back to my first comment, I I promote that these be understandable, defensible and equitable. Those are my three keys that I've been doing this for thirty years, doing this for for, yeah, thirty, thirty three years now.
And I know Mike's been real stickler on this one, and that's his main concern is that we do this in the right way. And I think you're hitting on that key and you can appreciate that more than anybody.
Yeah. I I and I want them to be understandable, so I think they are. So as you read through it, you can see the logic of how I came to where I'm at. Okay, stormwater is next. Stormwater, the last SDC was in two thousand and nine. Um, and this one, really, the only adjustment is essentially costs. I've tried to be, make it clearer as to what's in the SDC. We had some question about what we could do along Sixth Avenue with the ditch that's adjacent to Sixth. Um, and some of the improvements that were quantified in the nineteen ninety seven, it was the last master plan done for stormwater. So we're we're just carrying all those projects forward with current costs. Uh, and we anticipate doing a stormwater master plan update in the next year. So I think after that's complete, we may want to come back to you and and do another adjustment. And if we do, we'll adjust all five of them and just have any input you want to put into any five of them. Like, because I think it's a very simple process to bring it to you and update them. You could, you don't have to wait annually, you you can do it anytime you want to do it. So the stormwater, we're we're proposing a fifteen percent increase. It takes the current fee from twelve twenty five to fourteen oh five. So and we're we're still middle of the pack for stormwater. Stormwater fees for most everyone are pretty low. The highest I see with Gladstone at thirty six sixteen. Uh, and and everyone is unique in stormwater. So your case is probably about as bad as any. A lot of communities can be, for example, have a lot of infiltration. So they don't have piped system. Yet you have a extensive pipe system, you say some of your lines up to thirty inch diameter. So one of the things I did in the SDC was I modified what we allow a credit for because we have so much pipe that most communities, we use a twelve inches, the minimum size. You have to build a twelve, you don't get any SDC credit for a twelve inch line. But because you have so much stormwater, I, in the new document I proposed, we're changing it to fifteen inch. So you have to build a fifteen inch line before you get any, over a fifteen inch, before you get any credit. We're saying that's the minimum standard for the development. And while I'm on that subject, I noticed the credit table in this document has an error and I subtracted the twelve inch cost versus the fifteen inch cost. So if we're able to approve this tonight, we want to approve it with that condition that we correct the credit table in the stormwater component. Questions? The stormwater current master plan only went to like north of the school property. So the new master plan will carry it all the way out to Deuce and include all of the urban growth boundary. Transportation SDC. Um, transportation SDC. Um, we actually have some substantial changes to it, but the numbers don't change dramatically. The substantial changes were the old SDC had a very low estimated trip number. So the old document was done in, um, well, we just updated it last year and very recently. But it it was a carry forward of the previous document and it used a an estimated number of trips for build out of the urban growth bounty, very low, it was like twenty five thousand trips. And more realistically, that should have been about seventy five thousand. So in this new update, we've quantified what we estimated trips, number of trips, which is how we allocate transportation cost is the equivalent length, new daily trip that which is published by the Institute for Transportation Engineers. Uh, and so that that divided our costs by a much larger number. It allocated them over seventy five thousand instead of allocating them over twenty five thousand. But what we've also been able to do is include all the projects that were listed in your most recent transportation system plan. So that, a- as you recall, that that plan had, it has, I think, a hundred and six capital improvement projects. But it only had a portion of those that they thought were financially feasible. So they had a financially constrained list, which was only a a fraction of the total list. What we've done is we've included all hundred and six projects, but we've only included a seed money so that you, if a project happens, if there's a development in an area that one of these capital improvements that are listed in the in the overall plan would be beneficial, you're able to do that and you're able to fund it a hundred percent with SDCs. The fact that it's listed doesn't limit you on how much you could spend, it only qualifies it as being eligible for SDC. So that's one of the adjustments we made was we include all of the projects. So every project that DKS came up with is included in your SDC. If we get the opportunity for a grant, we could tackle any one of those hundred and six projects. That fee, we're proposing to go up by uh seventeen percent. It's pretty substantial. We do have some major projects that were, that have come, become uh to our uh, to our uh forefront in the last year, uh, which included the development we're seeing out on Eagle Creek Road. We want signalization at River Mill and Eagle Creek or a traffic circle, DKS has recommended a traffic circle. Uh, we think that was two point seven million dollars for that traffic circle. Um, they want improvements on the highway uh and improvements throughout town. So we've included the two point seven million for River Mill and Eagle Creek. That's maybe one of the largest projects that stand out. We we're seeing development right now for Eagle Ridge, right there at the intersection, Coyote Ridge immediately north and Kelland Donk across the street. So we're working with them to see how can we integrate the traffic circle into their current plans and kind of concluded that the city's not able to fund it. So what we're going to do on the interim is we'll have a four way stop installed at River Mill and Eagle Creek is what we anticipate. Uh, and then they're going to build just their typical frontage improvements. And then when we come back in two or three years, whenever we can fund the traffic circle, we'll end up removing maybe a hundred feet of their curb, two hundred feet of their curb. They have separated sidewalk from their curb, so we won't have to impact sidewalks. But we will be removing some curb line because we'll have to rearrange the road to go out and intersect the traffic circle. And we anticipate that traffic circle will all be pushed off to the east because we won't have access to take land from Kelland Donk or the property owner across the street. We'll end up wanting to negotiate with the properties east of Eagle Creek. So the uh transportation fee of fifty four hundred dollars is not excessive, you're mid of the mid pack. So any questions on transportation?
Just, just a general question, uh, equivalent dwelling unit, is that determined by square footage?
No, no, it's just a, it's just a dwelling unit. So if it has a family dwelling unit. So and they publish a separate number of trips for a single family or for multi-family.
How does that apply to commercial properties?
Commercial, there's a, there's quite a few categories that depending on what type of commercial property is, they list the number of trips per thousand square feet typically for commercial properties. So there's a, there's a large table and I think it's in the SDC. So the the back of the SDC has a summary of those, just a a sampling of those. There's more categories than that. So we reference the ITE table. So if a if a unique situation comes up, we can go to the ITE tables and find a unique application.
Thank you.
Yeah. Last is parks. So parks, parks is a, is a challenge for any community. And when I see parks standards like yours, which is nine to twelve acres per thousand, that's, that's very large. So I have other communities where the design standard was a half an acre. And I mean, they're expensive, parks are expensive. When you know what residential land costs, you know, if you and if you can pencil out, I try to do that in my memo to you. But just in rough terms, if you think about maybe let's say a half a million dollars would buy one acre and improve that acre. So that's low. I think that residential land, you know, if you're in R one land inside the urban growth boundary uh inside the city limits, R one land off bed is selling for four hundred thousand plus an acre right now. So that's expensive. So when you figure maybe a hundred thousand dollars to develop the park, which is a third of what it would cost, let's say we have a half a million dollars uh per acre. So your standard of nine to twelve acres, that's four and a half million dollars to six million dollars per thousand people. So recognize that's four thousand five hundred dollars per person, up to six thousand dollars per person. And your home densities have been increasing over the last five years. So we used to be, we used a standard of maybe two point six, ten years ago. Now the most recent American Community Survey says you're at three point oh three. So we take three times that per capita cost. So at forty five hundred dollars per capita, we're talking about thirteen thousand five hundred for parks or three times the twelve acre per thousand, we're talking about uh more. I don't remember what that number was. So at six million, nine three, the six thousand, yeah, so we're talking about eighteen thousand dollars for a parks SDC. So what we've done in the plan here is we've used your standard. Your standard is compromised a little bit in that the parks master plan has those standards, nine to twelve, but it also documented some deficiencies in the existing parts. You weren't fully developed to nine to twelve. And so when you analyze the deficiencies in the park master plan, your effective rate, I believe, was eight, eight point five acres per thousand. So we use that eight point five acre. I used a very modest number for land cost and development cost. And then I say to be feasible, we really need to keep our eyes open for grants. So grants is the answer for your parks if we need, and I've included fifty percent for grants, which is relatively arbitrary, of course, but that's what we need to do. We need to just be keenly aware of what grant programs are out there to make our goal achievable. So and the parks SDC, we're proposing to increase it from sixty six seventy six to seventy eight hundred dollars. So that's a seventeen percent increase, which is pretty substantial. Yes.
So, I mean, if we wanted to raise it, we wanted to double the SDC for it. You could just make the same argument and just adjust the amount of grant money you're getting.
Yes.
So if we want to raise it to thirty thousand dollars a household, we just say, well, then we don't need to get any grant money. But if we want to make it twenty five thousand dollars, we need five percent or ten percent grant money. We're just adjusting, it doesn't seem as defensible as the rest of the arguments for the SDCs where it's based in fact.
Yes.
Um, is that put us in muddy waters for being defensible legally, Peter?
I I think that the the park SDC is the one that's most difficult to estimate. Uh, in particular, because there's some park uses where theoretically we could have a park outside of the city, uh, outside of city's UGB. And so um, I, I actually think we're a little low because I think that the, um, I think the price per acre is going to go up beyond that four hundred thousand. What we're seeing in King City's UGB area is land trading around to eight hundred thousand an acre. And um, that's land that does not yet have any urban services. So um, the prices we're seeing I think is, you know, Sandy's in a moratorium, Malala has twenty net developable acres, Camby's pretty much out. And as we get more and more development pressure, the price of the raw land's going to go up. So I'm, I, I think I get that that this feels less grounded than the others and and I think that will always be the case. Um, the other thing about park SDCs is that um, well, so the city of Portland had a park SDC and the, it was the bigger your yard, the more you paid in the park. And I thought if there was ever one that was going to get rejected by the Oregon courts, it was that. Because like if you live in a studio apartment, the odds of using a park, a dog or something seem really high as compared to like somebody in Portland Heights with a, you know, acre. But that was upheld by the court. So um, yeah, I, I think that people that are moving to Estacada are families. They're families with kids that are in sports. We're getting people that want field turf. We want people, we're getting people with more and more amenities. I mean, we heard that there are going to be a hundred and thirty kindergarteners. Like, we're, we're going to have to produce more parks because the community is going to demand it. And and I don't see how we're going to get there unless we have a SDC of at least this amount. And and I think that this number more than any other is going to go up in a year if we look at this. Because I suspect that that trend in the price of land is going to continue increasing. Um, so yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable. We're, we're like less than half of of Lake Oswego's and Lake Oswego already has a very extensive park system. So
There's, there's two components that we can adjust. One is I, I used a very conservative cost estimate for land, like you mentioned, and development. In fact, I, instead of using what I felt was current cost, I tried to use the old fee and increase that by the construction cost index, which I'm not sure is appropriate for real estate. But that's what I applied to keep the numbers low. So one of the things we could do is use a more realistic price for what we expect land to be and development to be and still, still hold the fifty percent anticipated grants to make it feasible for the community. And that number can be, would be quite a bit larger. When I started, it was quite a bit larger.
So I was, I was surprised at how low this was. I know it doesn't feel low. But when I think about the demand we're going to have going forward and the amenities that people are going to have going forward and the city's plans for the water access and all that, that's going to be hugely expensive. And and we've been really lucky getting state grants. But you know, the the states, I don't know if will continue to be, I don't know if the state parks will be can, able to continue to hand out the kind of grants they were. They were really helped by ARPA. So
I also suggest that, you know, we, just like a lot of the communities we work, our firm works in, you're in an area that has a lot of natural recreation surrounding you. So to have a real high park standard within the urban growth bounty, you know, maybe isn't as much of a necessity as the city of Portland or city of Beaverton. Um, and you've got Timber Park plus all the nature areas within a few miles of Estacada. But that gets back into the standard that's adopted in the, in the Parks Master Plan. So maybe you want to review the Parks Master Plan?
That was going to be, my suggestion is that um, we may want to set a goal of uh council priority of reviewing the Parks Master Plan. And then we're going to talk about um, changing the code to require some land dedication for parks um, in developments. And as we see how how that's playing out and what our actual need is and what the, you know, what they're, how we can be realistic, but also think ten, twenty years ahead for Estacada. Um, we may need to in the next year or so, review our Parks Master Plan and reconsider what that number is or how that actually um, because it was twenty eighteen when we did the the previous one and a lot has changed, you know, in the last six years.
Sure. Um, so Peter, could, could we legally, defensively raise, raise this from the seventeen percent to say?
So Peter, could, could we legally defensively raise, raise this from the seventeen percent to say twenty or twenty two percent? I mean, could we legally defensively do that at this point rather than just going with this, the seventeen percent that's here or is that even, is that even gonna put a dent in?
Well, I, so I think that, I, I think that the we, we, we may think we can predict the real estate costs, but we, we won't be able to. But where, I mean, this is something that, that's something to revisit in a year. I, I think the other thing to revisit is the cost of developing it because it's, it's not the days of like having, you know, throwing down grass seed and, and that's being it. Those are over. I mean, you guys saw what happened to the library and how much work that took and, and the cost. And all that. And so that's, that's the other thing that we can look at is, you know, are the new parks going forward? We're gonna have like field turf. Are they gonna be? You know, are, are some of these developers going to pay? Do a fee in lieu of dedicating um open space or, or park space in their development? Based off the experience that we've had with a Campanella, that's a real possibility. Um because sometimes subdivisions don't like people from the city coming into their subdivision. They kind of think of it as theirs, whether it is or not. So I think that that is, that's something that we're gonna see too, is making sure that we can capture funds that are community amenity. For the new people that are moving in and also that our existing folks can enjoy. I, I, I think we could up it a little bit. I just all of these are going up and so we don't want our developers to have too much sticker shock.
And I, I would agree. I, I think I'm, I'm fine with where it is on this one as proposed. It's, it's a seventeen percent increase. It's a, a good jump from sixty six hundred up to seventy eight hundred. Um and I like uh Melanie's idea of, of addressing this at a bigger scope. From a council level, looking at the plan as a whole. And then at that point, once we know where we really want to be going, addressing the SDCs at that point for the parks.
Jonathan, you have anything you want to add?
My, my question circles back to, I agree that, that maybe we need to adjust this some, but have we done any study on how this impacts end user? I mean, in all these numbers that you presented, which I appreciate your work on this. It's fantastic, but like, what is this gonna do to the average cost of a, a new homeowner here? Like what, what are, these are the things we also need to look at. I mean, let's look at sticker shock value that's gone up since two thousand nineteen, you could buy a four bedroom house, say in Campanella for three hundred and sixty thousand. That same house today is now five hundred or five hundred and fifty thousand. Some of them you can see in six hundred plus thousand dollars for a four bedroom house that's used now. So what, in all of this, I do agree that we need to adjust the sum, but what numbers, at what point do we draw the line here a little bit too on the cost for the consumer? Because I know that we could say that this goes to the developers to a point, but let's be realistic. We know how this works. At the end, it gets built into the cost of the house. So in theory, what is this going to do?
So that
For these new residences, I mean.
The, you know, I, I've, I've looked at this extensively when we were when we were looking at the housing needs analysis and buildable lands inventory for uh the twenty eighteen UGB cycle. And your point is exactly correct. Like this gets passed on to the consumer. So the, the, really the only two variable, variables in, in um in housing are the cost of the dirt and the SDCs. Because the, the cost to build it, the houses is about the same per square foot. Um you, luxury finishes can add a certain amount, maybe eight, maybe ten percent unless people are just going way over the top, but it's really priced per square foot. So the higher the land costs and the higher the SDCs, what you end up with is a larger house because the developer needs to build a larger house in order to appraise. Because their SDC costs are the same and their cost per lot is the same. And so that's part of the reason that you see in a community like Westland with, you know, sixty five thousand dollar SDC. You don't see a fourteen hundred square foot house. You know, you see a four thousand square foot house or forty five hundred. So it's the only ways that we are able to raise revenue to pay for the amenities that people want is through either SDCs, which current residents feel good about. Or um fees and levies. Which people feel less good about because it's, it's coming out of their pocket. So I, I, I agree with you that the cost of the SDCs does definitely impact the end price that people will pay, but not necessarily in the way that you would think because the developer ends up building a larger house. And so the larger house ends up selling for more money on a price per square foot basis. So um.
But to my point, so does this now make us where say the barrier to entry to move to Estacada is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a house? I mean, what does it do?
I, i- if you just look at the numbers, we're increasing it, looks yeah, thirty five hundred.
Three thousand five hundred nine dollars.
Yeah. So the, that it, it will change that it could, it could change the type of new house that's being built, but that's already happening. Like if you look at what was being built and we started seeing a bunch of housing development, what, like sixteen, eighteen? Is that when? Yeah. That's when um I started getting, I started getting phone calls and, and I want to say like seventeen, eighteen from developers. That were like, hey, what's going on in Estacada? Um and then the houses that we saw getting built at that point were a smaller house than the houses that we've and, and I, I ran into someone on a walk who had just done a ten thirty one exchange for a house in Estacada. And I said, oh, how much did you pay? And she said seven hundred thirty thousand dollars. I was like, had this idea in my mind of like this cedar clad house on a hill like overlooking the river and like, we pulled it up and I sent it and Taylor's response was, I'm never going to be able to afford a house in Estacada. So um yeah, so the, the type of houses that we're seeing are changing. The existing houses though are the existing houses. So they'll continue to be more affordable options for people. They might just not be new construction unless we come up with some sort of system in order to there aren't really great tools for, yeah.
I just, I'm just
I know exactly what you're saying.
To adjust, but I think that there's, we have a, also have responsibility to our community to keep it affordable because at the same rate of what you're talking about, the supply and the demand would make the cheaper houses more of a demand, right? Because the supply then becomes less with us building bigger square footprint houses on the outside. So then okay, I don't have to pay seven hundred thousand and seven hundred and thirty thousand for a, a new house. But I can get an affordable house at six seventy in town now because that's a discount, right? Like, I just think some of this concerns me with that. And then also like, we just had our budget meeting and it was already brought up and addressed about like getting ahead of park services and stuff like that. So but yet we don't have anything in, that I recall on twenty, in the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget that's going towards parks to address the issue now.
Right.
So that's my other concern when we're talking about raising these SDCs is we're not being proactive and then we're leaning on a fifty percent chance or fifty percent grant funds as well. Like, but do we have a list of grants that we've currently? So these are the things that are running through my mind when we're talking about raising these things is we need to be able to explain what we are actionably doing as well.
Yeah. So what we've been able to do is get grants through the state parks. We've been able to get grants through Clackamas County Tourism. We've been able to get some state tourism grants. Um you know, the, the Estacada is, is already and will continue to become known as a place for active outdoor recreation. And you're seeing more and more of it as well as people that are providing the ability to do that. Um. You know, this is I first started doing legal work for Estacada in two thousand and ten. And at that point, you could buy a cottage for sixty thousand dollars. I know because I was just like, oh, what our house is in Estacada going for? I looked it up. And that same house today is like probably three hundred fifty thousand. And you know, what's changed? The change is in demand. So unless there are major UGB expansions in the metro area, like which would be difficult because most of Clackamas County's urban reserves are east and south of what was Damascus. And so you can't even get urban services to them. Like there's no path forward for that. Unless there's some major changes along those lines, we're going to continue to get that demand, the cost of land is gonna continue to go up. The only way around that would be if the city was able to land bank. We really don't have that right now. Um. Yeah. So I mean, I, I wish this is why the governor keeps having task force on housing. There's like not, there's no silver bullet.
I mean, and to, just to be clear, like I, I understand that we have to do something. I, I get that. I just when I look at this, that's my concern is we, we price this out of being, I mean, like even our current residents with continually going up, you, you're, we're pricing people out of our homes. I mean, I just, I struggle with this. So it sounds to me though, like what you're saying is on a separate note, we need to have a conversation about creating a culture and identity for this city and really embracing it being that we're on the precipice of the Clackamas River Wilderness. I think it's time to have that conversation and then develop according to that, the old town, new town conversation.
So the, the, once, once upon a time, when I was chair of Clackamas County Tourism Board, we, we had kind of this concept, which was called a gateways. So that's why Sandy says it's the gateway to, to Mount Hood and Estacada was kind of the gateway to um Clackamas, um you know, and, and I think that that there have been times when the council has really embraced active outdoor recreation and there have been times when council hasn't. And same thing with the county's tourism. I mean, they di- different points looked at active outdoor recreation at agritourism and other things and priorities can shift. But yeah, I think that um you could absolutely lean into the fact that and promote, people just don't know about Estacada. And when they find out, they're stunned. They're stunned that we're growing the way we are. Um they're stunned at like everything that's happening downtown. Like food carts and everything. And it's just, i- is more people become aware of it because they're getting, and the other thing as far as like whether it's tourists or day people. The um, the gorge is oversubscribed. So people don't have opportunities there. Mount Hood's oversubscribed. If this is gonna be the next one, it's going to be out here and it's going to be Columbia County. So you're going to get more and more recreation.
So my last question with this, and then I'll let this go. But and this, and this is just as you're talking, I'm thinking about this, right? With us being able to raise the SDCs to support, can we require more from say PGE, who's gonna lean on our tax base again? Our customers again for more money to maybe open up more easement or more access to embrace some of these things like the river and different things? Will this allow us to have that conversation with them to so that we, I mean, we're talking about parks being an issue, but that we can maybe lean on outdoor recreation. So can we lean on these people that are?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that we could get we've had so much going on. It's been, we've had to put some of this stuff on the back burner, but as far as getting grants from the county uh and travel Oregon, I think we can absolutely do that. And then I think that um having those conversations with PGE to figure out where they're willing to partner with us. The other thing that I've always thought could, could raise a bunch of money if, if voters were willing to authorize it would be during the summer, just during the summer months, so June, July, August, to have a gas tax increase. Because you have so many people that are going out and this is the last place to buy gas before. Or if they're recreating and they need camping, whatever, they need to come back for gas. So you, during those three months, you would be capturing a lot of gas tax from people that are not Estacada residents. So that would be another
And a lot of gas tax from people that are Estacada.
Yeah. So that, that would be the reason not to do it. But the reason to do it would be, you know, people kind of passing through.
I'm gonna get one in before. Sorry. Um speaking to first off, the gas tax that you just brought up, uh that was brought up back a long time ago when I was a counselor by me for a seasonal gas tax. That would have been just the months that travel is majorly and, you know, back and forth from Portland and those surrounding areas. Which would have helped us a bit.
Yeah.
Um but it was fought heavily because people were worried about locals, which I understand. Definitely understand that. That's why it was a seasonal gas tax to promote it during the time that would have been most effective. It was shot down, but we can bring it back. Um that's something we can talk to the people that live here about. And with the growth, maybe it's time that it was brought back. Uh second thing is, when we're talking about developers and we're talking about financial increases to their SDCs. Right now, whether you increase that SDC or not, we're a prime spot to build. Because we have buildable land and we are probably one of the most beautiful places in the state, I can honestly say. So your price per unit that you buy is going to raise whether you raise the SDCs or not. That's a given. Now, do you want to give that all to the developer or do you want to see it go to the success of your town building up in the future? Which is gonna be something you have to look at because we've already talked about fields that we want to put in. I got that you want to go for grants and stuff, but I can honestly tell you the state is tightening its belt. Pretty heavy because they're hitting a lot of increased pricing for themselves. So that option is gonna be out. The, all you've got is the SDCs and you've only got a, a window here before we reach our urban growth boundary. And we're either gonna have to call for expansion. Or we're gonna be out of that window. So you, SDCs is a small window here that you have to actually get an effective amount for the areas that you're looking to do this. Now, I'm not saying attack your, your developer, but at the same time, let's be fair. You looked on that list the last time. We are at the bottom of the rung for one of the most prized areas in the whole state. Where do you want to draw the line? And that's, that's what I want you to think about here when we're, we're sitting here going over these SDCs. Because I'm not asking for exorbitant amount or, or tilling the developers. I'm talking about reasonable, reasonable. And that's what we should be looking at here. And I think with what he, Kurt's coming up, that's pretty reasonable. So arguing any of that is yeah, I can't even figure that one out. But um raising the park SDC slightly, maybe something we should consider. Just look at it. Um but that's all I wanted to get out here while we're still talking about this, because I want you to really think hard on this. Like I said, that window's small. Before we actually pump enough building out, that we're gonna be at our urban growth boundary. And then it's either gonna be an expansion. Or we're gonna be stuck where we are, right? So let's, let's be real careful when we make this decision and really look at the perspective here going forward. That's all I ask from you. I, I appreciate giving me the time to speak on that. Okay, Melanie.
I was just gonna suggest that really, um these are pretty cut and dry. As far as the numbers, it's the parks one that is more, you know, what do you want? What, what do you want Estacada to look like? How many parks do we need? You know, that's, that I feel like is something that could be um developed uh a little more thoroughly through a redo over the parks master plan. Um and so, because that's really the one where we could, we could, you know, say we want more, say we want less. Everything else is pretty, they're pretty hard numbers. Um so even though, you know, we're just, I think that's the one that we're talking about right now. And then, you know, whatever you're feeling comfortable with is, is fine and Kurt can work with that, I'm sure. But um I think that's the one that we're coming down to. And it's kind of the one we're focusing on because it's the only one that's really we could vary on that.
I was trying to do a little research on that to see how it applies to, I got an estimate for uh building the, we're gonna be putting up down in the park. And the SDCs for bringing a local business into the industrial park in Estacada was a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to put up one building on one lot in the industrial park. So is that, how does that get applied? Are they paying for SDC fees for parks?
They're paying, actually, commercial industrial doesn't pay any SDC for parks.
No parks, it's just the storm?
Only a residential. Sewer water store.
And transportation?
Yes.
So they're eliminated from the parks?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, let me tell you what I would sense as an overview is, first I, if you want to adopt this, I think it's easy to come back. I think the real thing we need to do is evaluate the parks master plan. The parks master plan actually established the number of acres. It actually also included the cost of land and the cost of development. So those initially were in the parks master plan. Um if we wanted to go back and revisit the parks master plan, we could easily come back and modify this. You could adopt it tonight. With the basis I have, which I think is very conservative. It puts you in the middle of the pack. It's not, I don't think it's gonna be a, raise anybody's eyebrows to to warrant a challenge or anything like that. But if you wanted to modify your parks master plan and discuss those components, how many acres per thousand do you want? And what is our current cost for land? What's our current cost for development? Very easy to come back to you and modify this anytime. So I guess I would encourage you. So I guess I would encourage you to adopt it. I think it's, it's a moderate fee. Uh, and then we can modify it anytime you update your master plan.
Uh, anybody else got any questions on that? And we comfortable with that? Okay, so what do you need from us right now?
It would be a motion, a motion on the floor to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero one two, if that's.
With the, with the correction to the.
Yes.
Thank you. To the table uh, in Stormwater.
Stormwater correct.
Correct the credit table in Stormwater.
Yes.
I saw move.
First on the floor?
I'll second.
First and second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No. No.
So we had five, five yes and two no. Alright, so motion carries. Thank you. And we will definitely revisit that. The parks in the future. We'll have a little more tonight about that and then we'll get that on the list and. Give you some, provide some information to the council so they can see where we're at, where we could potentially go with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kurt.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Kurt.
Okay, next I have an introduction of a proposed solid waste franchise rate increase, including yard debris. I will hand that over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, we have some guests here this evening that can weigh in shortly, but just wanted to give you a quick. Um, summary of this is, um, we're provided a report and proposal for consideration of the council tonight. Um, could be reconsidered at a, at a special meeting July first or at your next meeting July eighth. Um, it could also be revised and approved immediately, but. We um, staff does annually refer to the county's rate review. They do a very thorough rate review of the. Um, solid waste franchisees. And um, they make a recommendation for um. A rate increase or a rate hold, whatever, however, it's coming out in the numbers. And so we are proposing tonight. Um, there's some background in the staff report, but then if you go to attachment one, it's on page one hundred and fifty. Um, it'll show you what what is being proposed uh, for the county's rate changes uh, for the residential thirty five gallon cart, which is the most common. And then what we're proposing for Estacada, which also includes in addition to um. A rate, the annual rate increase. Um, it includes adding curbside yard debris to residential service. And so um, that's the proposal on the table. You can see what what that would do to rates and we have some um. I don't know if you want to just go straight into questions or if you want me to um, explain anymore, but it only applies to residential. Um, the yard debris would be serviced for residential. And then if you look at, if you get to page fifty one, it shows what the proposed rates would be and what the. Percentage change would be. So if you get past residential, um, we're proposing a three point seven five percent rate increase. For um, commercial and for the larger containers that uh, people use. Either for commercial or for other residential services. Um, so we have with us this evening Josh Brown from Arrow. I don't know if we should just have them come up or.
I think um, Josh can come up and kind of, we've worked with him extensively on the, on the increases and understanding them. So I think he can come. Speak to that. And then the, the other, the next piece is that we've been working with the folks at Walker since. April of twenty twenty three um, regarding the yard debris piece. The lead time to get the containers for yard debris is about seven or eight weeks. And so to start service September one. We need a decision pretty quickly, which is one of the reasons that we thought we could. Do a special meeting on the first or or we can do it on the eighth. And then. We've re, we've received some inconsistent information about Walker's ability. To provide the service um, about whether or not a truck is owned, just a lot of stuff and. Uh, that I felt we needed clarity on. Some stuff came to light. Um, last week, it was just not consistent with what we had previously been told. And so my recommendation is that, and what I explained to the lawyers for. Um, both the personal representative who's here and then uh, for the um. I guess air uh, would be the way to describe it was that we need. We need proof that they would be able to provide this service. Um, on September, starting, you know, in September, because unlike. The, these are large, these yard debrays are large and they're extremely heavy and it. It would need to be mechanized in order to do it. It it wouldn't be something that could be done with their existing truck. So um, that's why they're all here tonight. So a lot of lawyers.
So Josh is here with Arrow. You'll have to use the microphone. Thank you. Um, and, and he's helped us come to um. What we believe is a good feasible number to provide a successful yard debris program, maybe curbside every other week pickup. Um, and when we were doing the survey that was so well responded to last year. The most common amount that people said they'd be willing to pay was ten dollars a month. Um, it kind of varied from five dollars, fifteen dollars, twenty dollars. It was all over the board, but probably between. Ten to twenty people, the people that were responding um, a lot said that they'd be willing to pay. This is coming up around eight fifty a month. Um, at this point. And so we feel like it's a, it's, we're, A, we're implementing a program. We're a small market. I'll let maybe Josh speak instead of me continuing to ramble on, but that's where we're at.
Sure, uh, no problem. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, Josh Brown with Aerosanitary Service. Um, a lot was said there, so I guess I'll start briefly with the rates. Uh, I think Melanie explained it well. Clackamas County does quite an extensive. Uh, financial audit of all of our Clackamas County haulers in the area. To kind of determine our rate of return and what that rating increase looks like annually. So. You know, over the past couple of years, working with Melanie and city staff, we. Thought for the city of Estacada, that's a fair approach as far as the base rates go on adjustments comparative to Clackamas County. Um, a lot of that, I guess, analysis and review of our rates looks at our costs. Cost of capital, uh, disposal cost, which is a very large percentage of our RP and L. Um, and you know, without getting too far into, into Metro, they've continued to raise their rates. Anywhere from eight to twelve percent over the last couple of years. So that's a big, big impact to our rates, which is also part of that analysis. So. Um, I think, you know, as uh, Melody explained it pretty well in the packet as far as that request goes. So. Unless there's any other questions on rates, um, I think I can move on to. Yard debris. Um, and again, you know, our company, we are willing, we're ready to go um, with approval. Uh, Peter mentioned, you know, seven to eight weeks. I think that's. Pretty fair. We feel we can get carts in, you know, on the street in that amount of time. Uh, for our company, we're a little bit more fortunate. We're able to utilize an older truck potentially coming out of Portland or another area. That happened to invest in a, in a full new truck. So um, just a couple of. Points, I think the carts, you know, we're looking at about fifty thousand dollars for only our customers for the carts themselves. Um, and that's kind of made up of that eight fifty number that we came up with. One thing to note for us to prepare a number for this program, we based it on our customer base, right? Um, we're two separate companies, two separate franchises. So our kind of estimate on that was based on our. Our customer base. And as Melanie said, every other week service uh, collect a curbside. So. Yeah, I think I I can pause there if I'm sure there's questions or uh, move on further, whatever the council prefer.
Just clarifying is every other week, is that pretty standard for yard debris in other territories?
Yeah, it is. Um, it depending on the jurisdiction and the city, uh, every other week generally works. Yard debris is a, is a uh. Quite fluctuating volume because of the time of year. So during the, you know, the fall and the spring, it's heavy. And then in the winter months, there's not much. So. You know, trying to balance out that cost, it's, it's, it's better to do it every other week, especially in those months where. A lot of people are not utilizing that service, so.
Would the, every other week, would that still be weekly for recycling? That wouldn't change any of the current services that are.
Correct, yeah. That's how we, we proposed this, was keeping the current services the same, yeah.
I think that's, if you don't have any other questions, um, I think you want to hear from. Uh, from Walker. Oh, Jerry has a question.
I, I, it's a, it's just a question for, you know, my own personal. Uh, so the yard debris would, wouldn't be going to a typical like garbage landfill site. It would be going to a. It would be completely separate from garbage pickup, recycling pickup, and it would be going to a, a site for yard debris.
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, we would pick it up in a separate truck, separate route. Um, for our company, we would run it. Two days during the week, every other week, um, for our customer base. And it would go to direct to Metro and separated from everything else. And Metro has a contract with. Uh, I want to say dirt huggers, but a compost facility where. All of their organics and yard debris uh, get transported.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if, if we vote this in tonight, which, which I think is a possibility, right?
Possible.
If we vote this in tonight, when does, when do the rates take effect?
We're proposing September first for the rates to take effect. Assuming that everything goes as planned and we can get all the carts, they're ninety gallon, ninety gallon carts, right? Um, if they could get, receive them and get them distributed so they're ready to start the service in September, then we could.
So yeah, and that's, that leads to the next question. If that's not able to be done, then the rates don't take effect until.
Until it is.
That happens.
So when that we just.
That's what we had discussed that um. We didn't think people would want to pay a fee for a service they're not providing. And again, um, Arrow has really worked with us, not just. This year on the rates, but last year on the rates as well. And they've been really transparent about showing their math and. And helping us understand all the costs that go into this, which are not insignificant. Um, so this is a, this is a significant expense for them because they're having to bring in a new truck. Um, as well as all the containers. And so it's um, quite complex.
No more questions? Alright, thank you.
We, we also didn't want, um, I think I have the feeling that every, most everybody is ready to. Get moving on this. We don't want it to be a surprise to anybody though, because it's not a pick and choose. I want yard debris. I don't want yard debris. I want. Yard debris for September and October and then I don't, it's, it's a year, it's like recycle. Um, you're going to have the cart. And if you get the garbage service, you get recycled. You're also going to get yard debris. And so it's going to impact all residential customers. Um, and so we didn't want to surprise anybody. If you're ready to vote for this tonight so they can get rolling, you know, we can do that. If you'd rather have a special meeting and, or wait, or wait till July eighth, um, we just didn't want to have. We hate to hear later on down the road that, oh, I didn't know this was coming. I never heard anything about it. And I feel like it's been a conversation. For quite a while that you've been hearing from the community on, um, but we just don't want to rush you either. We wanted to present this tonight with, with options for your. For what you're comfortable with.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Also, we are attempting to avoid a double rate change. Like we could say that the um, inflationary rate increase would go into effect. Um, July one, and then once the um, yard debris is, is ready to roll, then we'll implement that fee. But that just feels like a one, two. Kind of a punch. So that's why kind of maybe twisted arm a little bit and said, hey, can we just hold off on the rate change altogether until we can. Implement the yard debris if that's still the direction that we felt we should go.
I think uh, everybody would be agreement on that as far as waiting until the surface actually starts.
Yeah, alright, and then, um, Peter.
Yeah, so um, we've been working um, since, the city's been working. Since April of uh, last year about, uh, one of the things being when can we. When can we get this yard debris happening? And then uh, what's going on with? In, in our goal is all of you, I'm sure remember, was the spring of this year, we were hoping to. Get rolling on it and that didn't happen. Um, and. We, we've had trouble kind of understanding what assets are available or not available. Um, particularly a truck. So at this point, we've been told there is a new truck and then there's not a new truck. And then the new truck's in storage. Um, and then as well as who has the power to run the company, there's been a lot of confusion. Um, so for instance. So there, there's somebody who doesn't have a truck. That has the power to bind the company and maybe someone that does have a truck that doesn't have. A role in the company or the ability to bind them. And our hope had been that there would be conversations where all this would be worked out. And then that, that hasn't happened. And then what we were told at our last meeting was, oh, well, the. Company could be transferred. Which legally it might be able to, but the likelihood of that happening. After getting some more information about um, kind of where the estate is, it's not seem. Particularly feasible, like it just anything, it's possible, but very unlikely. And I know that all of you have been concerned. About the yard debris and. It would be um, kind of disastrous for us to roll it out for half the city and not the other. So I asked the lawyers for the parties to come and we need to have a clear understanding of. How they can move forward. And um, we, we may need to schedule an executive session. In fact, that's kind of my recommendation so that we can have a very. Candid conversation about the um. About the franchise agreement and what your options are. And I'm not suggesting you would take any options. I just want you guys to understand what's possible. And then I want clearly on the record in a public meeting. People describing the state of the affairs. And what they can do. Because I don't want to get to a situation where. It's not going to happen in September. And then whether it's whoever it would be that would like step in. They wouldn't have the lead time to get the carts. So that would not be, that would be not good either. So um, I don't know who wants to come up.
I think that would be a fair assessment, but um, we'll have both parties.
Yeah.
Come and speak on that now. And then I think an executive session would be best.
Yeah.
In this case.
Because again, it's just like, it like issues like the status of the truck. And for a ninety gallon. I mean, I had one of those in a, in, in a house where I had a large yard and. And a long driveway and just rolling it to the, and I'm not. I'm not as big as many of the counselors here, but just like rolling it to the bottom of the driveway. I mean, it was super heavy. So um.
Would one or the other of you like to speak first or do you have a statement or?
Really quickly, I just question of clarity. It was brought up the last time we discussed this, the idea of. Is it feasible to do a giant drop box like a thirty yard or something that's provided for the community like we saw once before? Did we look at that anymore as well?
We, I looked at the cost of that is, I did look up the cost of that. It's about six or seven hundred dollars per drop box when we have that disposed of. And. It was, it was a stopgap kind of a measure that we were doing. So I haven't looked further at it because it really does eliminate. A lot of people from being able to utilize the yard debris program. And it's um, it also has its own problems of, of, you know, needing to monitor. We used to have, be able to keep it behind a locked gate. That worked really well, actually. And the city just covered the cost of the disposal and um, Arrow provided the drop boxes and the hauling. It's not ideal long term because it does. It.
My mind just goes to, we have this spring and summer, but then we have. A long winter. So really people don't, aren't cutting their grass or really utilizing waste for. Is it fair, say four to five months of the year?
Probably, yeah.
So that, that's just, that was just a question. I wasn't sure if we had any, if we'd looked at that more, but.
I hadn't. I mean, that is, that wasn't the direction I had received from majority of every. I hadn't, I mean, that is, that wasn't the direction I had received from majority of everybody, so I haven't.
Or is that something Walker could cover for their customer base?
I, I mean, I don't know whether they'd have the ability to bring and remove drop boxes. We, we've had just overwhelming demand for on, because I think a lot of people might not have a truck or a trailer or the ability to haul it. And so if they can't, you know, if they can't get it to the drop box, then it, it doesn't, they're not able to kind of utilize that service.
I was just, I said.
Yeah.
Just, it did work well in the interruption. We've been working on this since about twenty eighteen.
I mean, we spent more time thinking and talking about yard debris than I ever expected in, in my, so, um, yeah.
Do you want, yeah, do you want to, do you want to come to the, uh, come up here and go ahead and introduce yourself? And I guess you know somebody. Thank you for being here.
Uh, good evening, councilors and Mr. Mayor. My name is Brian Jolly, and I am one of the attorneys at my law firm that represents Mark Engel, who's sitting next to me. We appreciate the council inviting Mr. Engel to appear at this meeting. In a moment, Mr. Engel would like to make a statement to the council about his goals for Dan Walker disposal and for the truck that he currently has under contract. Mr. Engel makes his statement, before Mr. Engel makes his statement, I want to give some background to the current legal status of the company and the lack of communication that we're experiencing from the company's current management. As many of you know, Mr. Engel's mother, Judy Walker, was the operator of the business for decades. Mr. Engel was an employee of the business for many of those years and is a beneficiary of Ms. Walker's ownership interest in the business as provided in her will. Today, Ms. Walker's estate is still under the jurisdiction of the Clackamas County Probate Court. We are keenly aware that the council has a strong desire to see yard debris removal service being delivered to the citizens of Estacada by September one. We would like nothing more than to be able to sit up here and fully describe an informed plan for the company to deliver these services once Mr. Engel takes ownership of the company. But the fact is, we can't do that. We can't do that because as, as we sit here today, we know virtually nothing about how the business has operated for the past year or its current financial position. For months, my office has requested financial statements and other information from the personal representative of Ms. Walker's estate. In March of this year, we were provided with financial statements that contained at least one very critical error. The error was quickly pointed out to the personal representative's counsel. We were told that we would be provided with corrected statements. That was approximately three months ago. Today, we haven't received any financial statements that the personal representative will stand behind. Given council's current priorities, it's important to let you know that the truck that Mr. Engel has on reserve was offered to the business's current management to be put in service in March of this year. In a letter that I wrote to the personal representative's counsel, I invited a discussion about how that truck could be put into service immediately. We have not yet received a response to that offer. At this point, we are obviously very concerned about the business and the lack of transparency shown to Mr. Engel. As a shareholder, Mr. Engel is entitled to, to the disclosures we have been demanding. The personal representative is either unable or unwilling to provide the legally required disclosures. But regardless of the reason, the status quo is unacceptable. Given no other option, we have recently filed the petition for instructions in the probate court. Our petition asks for a various, for various forms of relief, including compelling current company management to produce financial statements to Mr. Engel. We are also asking the court to allow the distribution of Ms. Walker's ownership interest in the company to Mr. Engel immediately, instead of waiting for the entire estate to be settled. We're currently waiting for the court to schedule a hearing on our petition. And that is a summary of where we currently stand. It's unfortunate that I am here reporting on the state of affairs in a public forum. Frankly, it's embarrassing for the reputation of the company. But we believe that this information is critical for the council to hear and consider as you make decisions for the citizens of Estacada. We will welcome any requests for information or questions the council has at any time. We look forward to being as helpful as we can. And at this time, Mark Engel would like to make a statement.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, councilors, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mark Engel. I am here tonight to talk to you about my plans for the future of Dan Walker Disposal Service. As you heard Brian state, I have been an employee of my parents' company for decades. We discuss the Garbs Company daily and have been making plans for the continued service of meeting the needs of the citizens of Estacada. Gives me tremendous pride when customers tell me how great my drivers are and how well they are treated on the route. After the loss of the twenty twenty garbage truck, my mother and I placed an order to replace that truck. Here's some details about the new truck. It's a twenty twenty-three Freightliner M-two class chassis, body is a Loadmaster Legacy S with a twenty-five yard capacity. The truck is rated for commercial and residential garbage, recycling and yard debris. The truck was prepared for service effective January fourth, twenty twenty-four, and is currently located in Clackamas. I personally have been paying the flooring costs since that date. Once the financing is secured for the truck, it could be in service within one day. While the truck can perform all services we provide as, sorry, all services we provide can, the current fleet, it was purchased with the intent to replace the current garbage truck. The new truck has a bigger capacity, which is needed. Current truck could then be switched to yard debris service. We also currently are waiting a proposal on a twenty twenty-five Freightliner M-two class with a twenty-yard body. That truck would be able to go into service around June twenty twenty-five.
Does the current truck that you have have a, um, automated lift on it? The, the one that you would switch out, you would use the new one for garbage and the one that was being used for garbage is going to be used debris. Does it have a lift on it?
Yes, they all do.
Thank you.
Are things just because the, are things sort of in a standby because everything's in probate right now, or can you speak to that? I don't know.
Um, I don't, I wouldn't say that's an accurate statement. There are things that could happen while the probate is ongoing. Um, the personal representative controls the shares that Judy Walker owned in the business.
Hmm.
They could ask Mark to take management of the company over tomorrow. They could do that. Um, they could also, um, respond to our, uh, request to discuss the new truck and how to, how to put it in service. I mean, there's a lot of things that could happen. Um, the company being in probate doesn't stop the business from operating, decisions being made. Um, it only really affects the ownership shares that Ms. Walker had being distributed out of the estate.
So has, has the truck been purchased or not?
Currently, no. Uh, Mark is pl- is paying the flooring cost personally. So it's essentially on reserve. Is that a correct statement, Mark?
So no one else can buy it unless you were to release it?
Correct.
And then check, it seems like there's a lot of unknowns here, uh, with the probate. Your, this is a big question, but what would you estimate best case, worst case scenario from, you know, Mark being able to take over the company?
Are you asking about timeline?
Yeah.
Um, we're currently, uh, considering filing an emergency motion with the court. Um, whether it's an emergency motion or the pending motion, we would hope that the court, and it's impossible to say when they can get to us. Um, but we hope that the motion would be heard in the next couple of weeks. Um, so essentially we make the request to the court, um, to at least consider the distribution of the ownership or any other, um, recommendations that the, or the parties can agree on. Um, so I hope to get some traction in the next few weeks. With the court calendar, it's really impossible to know.
Um, so the people that are managing the company right now, it, we couldn't get them to come to the meeting?
So their, their attorney is here.
Okay.
Uh, Dahi, did you put in, who is this person right here?
She's the attorney for the.
Oh, their attorney.
Okay.
So when, when, I guess when you're done with questions, uh, with Mr. Engel, Mr. Jolly, then we can have the other attorney.
All right. Do we have any more questions? I just, I think it's hard to make a statement that it doesn't impact the ability to run the business, but that you can't give us a, an answer because of the situation. I, I respect what you're saying, but it's hard for me to hear that this doesn't affect the way that the business is run, but it in fact is, because you can't come to us with potential solution outside of, we hope.
Our position, I mean, we're sort of on the outside right now. We have no control. We're trying to get information. We haven't been provided information. So right now, I mean, the reason why we wanted to be here is to provide transparency to the council for our position.
It's appreciated. It's just hard to make that decision. I'd like to hear from, if that, if you are the attorney for the the side that's managing it currently, I would like to hear if you have answers.
So quick, are, are your shares being contested?
No, there's no argument about the fact that, uh, Mark is the beneficiary of her shares.
Just a matter of the timeline of getting through the probates.
Correct.
They get distributed.
Correct.
Thank you.
Right, there's no other.
Yeah, and thank you for the transparency.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
And I will hear from, I, I don't have your name.
Teresa, Teresa, yes. I'm sorry, I forgot your last name. Nelson, Teresa Nelson.
Again, my name is Teresa Nelson. I'm the attorney for the personal representative for the Judith Walker Estate. Right now, the estate is, as you know, currently undergoing probates. And what Mr. Engel had asked here recently is for a partial distribution of the estate, meaning having the company be distributed to him earlier than, uh, what would otherwise be the conclusion of the full probate proceeding. I, I think that is very doable here within the next few months. It's difficult to gauge how quickly the Clackamas County Court can operate. It's a very busy court, but, uh, so we are in the process of finalizing some of the financial information and accounting for the probate estate so that we can make an informed decision to be able to distribute the company to Mr. Engel. Uh, I'm here to answer any questions if, if there are any. Uh, but, but yes, we are hoping to do a, a partial distribution of the company. When I say partial distribution, full distribution of the entire company so that Mark Engel can own one hundred percent of the shares. Right now, he owns, I believe, twenty percent. Judith Walker, she owned eighty percent when, upon her passing, and Mark Engel is the primary beneficiary of the estate.
So, uh, I don't want this to sound insensitive, but, um, so we have, we have, we have to provide a service to our community. And, uh, we have a deadline, a, a, a deadline to provide the service to our community. So, um, w- we have to make a decision based on the information that e- everyone has given us on whether Walker Disposal can provide this service by the date that we have, which is September first. And, uh, from what you're saying, it doesn't sound like that's feasible.
That's not what I'm saying. It is feasible, the company, uh, it is in a good position. There is plenty of capital to invest in any sources of equipment that would make yard debris possible. Um, and we are willing to work with Mr. Engel and his counsel so that we can make this doable. I know that Mr. Engel has other resources. He's been investing in reserving this other truck. So I would say at this point it is very feasible.
Yeah, W- Walker's, Walker's Dis- disposal has been a part of this community for a long time, so we would like to continue that. Um, we just need assurance that we're going to be able to, you know, not just half of our community is going to be able to have a service by September first that we can, you know, get this on the, you know, we can make a decision and get this, you know, have a definitive, yes, we can do this by September first.
Yes, we can do this by September first.
So this is, this kind of is representative of the issue. So we've been dealing with this for fourteen months. And we know that, we know that they don't currently have the ability to provide it. We do not have, I mean, I, we know that it's going to take seven to eight weeks in order to order the bins. Where, there needs to be a way to deliver the bins. Um, and I mean, I would love if they could give us a concrete proposal that demonstrates that they're able to work together, however it's managed. I, I don't, I, I think it's, it's unlikely that a judge, in my opinion, and I could be wrong. It's certainly possible the judge could do a partial distribution, but prior to the financials being like the judge is going to want to ensure that the assets that are inside the estate are sufficient to pay taxes and liability and all of those things. So until those financial documents are finalized, I don't know that we could make any assurances, I don't know that anyone can make, including the attorney, can make any assurances that that partial distribution would occur. And like, what kind of evidence do we need in order to, or what do they need to provide us, and this is partially a question for you, in order to demonstrate that they can provide this service, um, I think is, is a question that I've had, that I haven't been able to get concrete answers to.
Yeah, what's the, what's stopping the controlling entity, if you will, from purchasing the truck now to have the available resource to do this? I mean, you're saying the company's in good shape and you're operating the company, you're representing the people that are actually operating it in its current standing. So why hasn't anything been done already? Like, why, why?
Judith Walker, she passed away, as you know, April last year. And the probate proceeding, we've just been keeping it status quo, trying to organize all the, the aspects of what it takes to, to make sure that a probate is properly administered. But, uh, at this point, uh, with the demand for yard debris in the Estacada community, I, I think at this point, it, it makes sense to move forward with, uh, getting something in place and, um, working with Mr. Jolly to ensure that the September first deadline can, can happen. And, um, getting some kind of, um, uh, management ability over to Mr. Engel. Right now, it's been difficult to work with Mr. Engel for various reasons I won't get into, but, um, if it means, uh, getting this company to him, making sure that he's able to serve the Estacada community, that people are able to have Dan Walker Disposal Service continue to serve, uh, the people, then, um, then yes, it, it's time to step forward with accomplishing those goals.
It's going to take eight weeks to get the containers, seven, eight weeks to get the containers. I would just say, what I would like to see is by July first, see an invoice for the paid containers ordered and the truck reconciled, it paid for, not flooring costs covered for the finance costs of holding the truck on the lot. If they can provide an invoice, a paid invoice showing that the containers are ordered and the truck is resolved and taking care of and ordered and paid for, then I, I'd be happy with that by July first. That, that means that you can realistically hit the window. And it gives us the opportunity that if you're not able to achieve that, that we can look at what we need to do to resolve. I don't think it's, um, your concern of keeping everything kind of status quo within the company while the probate's getting settled. Well, if you lose your franchise agreement because of the way that you're running the business, it's not benefiting the business.
No, I, I, I completely. No, I I I completely understand that. And that's why we're taking steps to make sure that this probate gets resolved as soon as possible, getting the company over to Mark Engel.
It just doesn't sound like that's going to happen in the timeline before you guys are going to be in a put in a position. Where you could possibly lose your franchise agreement with the city of Estacada. The probate is not going to be resolved, so you guys have to come together and come up with a solution.
Yes.
Quicker than that.
Yes, I I understand.
What what does that look like? You guys being able to get together, order the containers, get the truck taken care of before July first?
Yes.
Did is that something that you could commit to that you'd be willing to take care of?
Think so, if if.
Mister Jolly's. Fourteen months, so it's four days, it's.
That's what we need. Will we give consensus on July eighth before the next meeting? Yeah, I think the next meeting, give them two weeks, that's two weeks. And if you can't come to an agreement as a.
Well, you know, I I just got one question here. I'm trying to figure out, I I know who Mark is and I know who's representing him. I know you're representing the other party, but I don't know who the other party is. So I'm trying to figure out, you know, who I'm depending on here on one side. I I've got an invisible person. I mean, can you kind of give me some information? Who is?
So in in Judith Walker's will and in a codicil, which is an amendment to a will, she nominated Jennifer King. Uh, Jennifer Jennifer King, she was appointed by Clackamas County Court to administer Judith Walker's estate. Unfortunately, Ms. King was not able to attend this city council meeting tonight, but I came here on behalf of her to speak on her behalf. Uh, so Jennifer King, she is the one who has legal authority to enter into any agreements on behalf of the estate and make any.
Is she part of the family or?
She's on Zoom.
Oh, okay, I can ask her. Uh, Jennifer, are you there? Okay, great. Jen, are you there? Okay, great. Jen, are you, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you. I I'm just.
Sorry, I'm new to this whole Zoom thing.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what connection you have to this. I've heard from Mark and his representation, and I've got your representation in front of me, but I don't know you, so I'm kind of trying to get an idea of who we're dealing with here.
I'm sorry, I'm out of state right now, so I couldn't attend. I had a prior vacation. Um, I'm Judith Walker's granddaughter.
Okay. All right, that that helps me out immensely. At least I know where it's coming from, so.
Ms. King, do you think that you can with if we gave you till July eight that you guys can reconcile getting the containers ordered for the yard debris and getting the truck ordered?
Um, I I know we can absolutely order the the containers right now. Um, as far as the truck. Somehow council needs to work together to figure that out. I know that we can probably. Pay for most of it. I'm I'm not exactly sure right now how much it's going to cost. I haven't seen any of the paperwork for anything on it.
Let me find out for you. Mark, do you know how much the truck's gonna cost? Two hundred and seventy-two thousand, Ms. King.
I I'm pretty sure we could probably do that.
By July eight?
More than likely. It's on record.
And so I feel like it's fair to say that we give them till July eighth if if that's not resolved between.
Fair enough.
So we would need, I think the both of the companies would need, you know. Confirmation that the the council is going to approve this, um, the rate proposed rate changes that include the yard debris service. So that they know that that is a for sure thing going forward before they order these carts. Um, and that could be done tonight, and then we could follow up on July eighth. We could schedule an executive session. Uh, with Peter afterwards, if if, you know, if we needed to have that. That probably the next steps.
Yeah, I think that that makes sense. So I mean, again, my goal and the reason that I brought both sides or asked both sides to attend is because we were just getting a lot of conflicting information. I was hoping that we could get some of these things resolved. And so some of this is outside of the control of all of these people because it is a court, but. Um, you know, I think it's really important that we demonstrate to our residents so that it's a clear path forward.
Fair enough. I think I think so. At this point, we're we're looking at the rate increase. I mean, that's really what they're asking for tonight. So let's get that out of the way right off the bat. I don't think we need to wait on that, and then we will. Uh, meet in executive session to decide the rest of this. I hope that's okay. Yeah.
That's fine to wait. Not, we don't need to schedule a special meeting for the course, right?
Right.
Do we need any wording to? Yeah, I've got. You got it. I don't know for the for the commitment of the. The ordering the yard debris and stuff so that we're on schedule.
Yes, so I mean, I think that I think what what I heard you say to them and what they've assured us they're going to do is provide us with proofs that the. Containers have been ordered and that the uh, truck has been resolved. By July eighth.
Do I need to add that to my motion?
No, I know. I mean, I think that realistically, if that doesn't happen by July eighth, I mean, I don't think it would be a surprise to anyone that. That what we'd be discussing in the executive uh, session would be terminating the franchise agreement. Or providing providing them with their thirty day cure.
Okay.
So really, you see this on the increase for yard.
So I moved to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero fifteen. A resolution of the Estacada City Council approving a change in rates. For solid waste, recycling and other materials as allowed by ordinance twenty eighteen dash zero zero four and twenty eighteen dash zero zero five.
Second.
Yeah, I got a first and second. Let's do a roll call on this if you don't mind.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes, thank you very much. And uh, there's obviously no opposed, so we'll move that along. So thank you very much. And then we will schedule a public hearing for uh, the uh, July eighth meeting. And we will get into the rest of this and we'll see where we're at at that point. We thank all of you for coming forward tonight and presenting. You did a great job. I think we got a lot of questions answered, so I appreciate that. Um, and we'll see you on July eighth, I'm sure. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have the extraterritorial water service request. Woodland Road.
Okay, quick summary of this. A property owner at three, three, seven, eight, five Southeast Woodland Road is requesting city water service connection. Um, as the uh, well, on that property is no longer sufficient to provide water service. And the city does have a water line that runs right past the property. And so that is the request.
Okay. Right, and I think uh, on this, I think the question I would ask is that. You know, when we're looking at development near the city, that this wouldn't be developed. This is just for water service.
Right.
Um, and that at a later date, if they chose to sell that to a developer, that would not, they would have to go through the hole.
Right, we're not recommending annexation at this point, which you could require that property annex in order to receive the water service. Based on um, current state of affairs in the city, we're recommending that. You just allow her to to the property owner to have the water service. They would pay the STC, the STC overlay for that. Um, that new pipe that was installed there um, to provide the water and we'd we'd work out a um. Dawn will come up with the estimate for connecting to city water and provide that. We'll have an agreement and there it will include a. Non remonstrance.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the right direction. Um, so that when it is time, like sometimes there might be a property right in the middle of a. A urbanized area and they're refusing to annex, but they're benefiting from all the services around. So this says, when it, when the city says it's time to annex, uh, they'll be required to annex, but we're not going to have them do that at this point because that would also then allow. Subdivision of the property and at this point, the current need is water and a future possibility is is development later on.
I think that's fair enough. Do you have you have questions or anything you'd like to state on this? Okay, I think that's fair enough. So what you're looking for is a motion for this tonight?
Yes, that is included in the staff report.
All right, can I have a motion on the floor, please?
Uh, I moved to approve the request for extraterritorial water service to three, three, seven, eight, five Southeast Woodland Road. With the condition that the property owner sign a non remonstrance agreement. Uh, agreeing to annex at such time that the city is ready for annexation of this property.
Thank you for that.
I'll second that and thank you, Charity, because my brain kept going to extraterrestrial.
Okay, we got a first and second. Uh, let's do a roll call on this as well, please, thank you.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes, thank you very much for that. Okay, moving right along, we have the Parkland Solutions Draft Code Amendments and Review.
Okay. Let me get started. Yeah, I was just gonna say, this is based on um. Mental capacity and energy at this point. If we need to take a break, we can. Also, um.
Yeah.
Um, Ellen could just give you an overview of this and we could carry it over to the next meeting if you'd like to do that, so we don't, if it's. If it's a quick conversation, we could do it if you want. We however you want, however much time you want to spend on it, do it tonight. We can push it forward.
Quick bathroom break.
Okay.
Yeah, sure enough.
Right, we'll take just a moment for a break.
Thank you. All right, council's back on. And we will hand it over to you, Ellen.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna present, uh, this is just for discussion. There's no decisions that need to be made tonight. Um, but this is for the Parkland Solutions Project. It's just a draft amendments review. Okay, so just to give a little background or reminder, refresher, uh, various um, planning commission and. Parks and Rec meetings in twenty twenty-three commissioners to set discuss the need for dedication of parkland and open space at the time of land division. In order to provide an adequate supply of recreational land for the um, quickly growing population. So at the um, first joint workshop with with you guys, council, planning commission and Parks and Rec. Um, committee, three boards comprising the project advisory committee. Um, at that meeting, staff recommended that the city address the Parkland Solution Project in two phases. Um, we presented project and phase timelines. And um, we identified committees' project and public engagement goals. Um, the committee decided at that time, as you'll probably remember, to move ahead with the phased approach. And this is basically, we're right in the middle of phase one. Um, so I'll read the phases. So. Phase one is just a quick interim code update just to get some amendments, uh, get some code on the books. That would require park space dedication and all new subdivisions, because we don't have that now. And then phase two would be a more thorough, community vetted, um, boards vetted, update to the development code. Um, and hopefully also the parks master plan and the STC's um, schedule. And just to give another refresher, just here's the project timeline. This was a graphic that I shared at the um, the joint workshop, the first one in April. Um, since that time, staff has made progress on phase one of the projects, um, including continued research and the development. Of the draft amendments that I'll go over um, to the development code. And tonight, we're in yellow, the city council review. Um. So yeah, tonight, it's just about reviewing the code amendments and getting feedback and any questions. Um, you have, try to answer those two. And at that point, staff will revise, staff being me, will revise the draft code. Based on your feedback, um, in July, this is scheduled to go to the planning commission. And that would be the first hearing in the adoption process. They would consider the draft amendments at that hearing and then forward a recommendation to you. Um, between July and August, I would revise as necessary and prepare for the adoption hearing, which I believe is um, scheduled for August twelfth. Things move ahead as we expect they they would. Um, and then the adoption hearing would be August twelfth, uh, followed by a second reading. And September is when the code would actually go into effect if this timeline were followed. So tonight, again, just a quick overview of the draft amendments. Um, and then any questions for me, staff and discussion and feedback? So I'll just jump into outlining the amendments. Okay, so there's four chapters, sixteen oh eight definitions is the first one that's uh, that has amendments included. Um, so we added new definitions for community park and neighborhood park. Um, and just a note, after discussing with Melanie and Elena this morning, we decided to shorten the longer definitions that we previously had in the packet. Um, those were pulled from the city's um, parks master plan, but they were kind of unwieldy. So um, we just, um, we shortened them. You can read the shortened definitions on the handouts that I provided you. They'll be on the first page. Um, in this chapter, we also revised the definition of open space to add more detail of what open space does and does not include.
Can I ask the question on this particular chapter?
Sure.
Um, where where does the parks, HOA parks fall into this, the ones that are run by the HOA?
Um, I don't think that there's a differentiation between HOA parks. I, yeah, yeah, uh, who runs them? Whether the city or the HOA or some other agency would run them, I think that the definitions would apply.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, and the second chapter affected is sixteen point three three, the mill area mixed use zone chapter. And um, and this was added a requirement for the provision of parkland and open space according to the standards of. EMC chapter sixteen dot one one six, which I'll I'll talk about in a little bit. Um, yeah, that's basically the section dealing with design standards and improvements for subdivisions. Third affected chapter is sixteen point five two, the plan development chapter. Um, in that chapter, uh, we just clarified existing standards pertaining to parkland and open space dedication. Um, we also added a standard that would allow the city to require an environmental site assessment before accepting parkland or open space dedication. And then the fourth. Chapter that was amended is the um, the design standards and improvement sixteen point one one six. Um, and so we revised existing code language to require instead of encourage the provision. Or dedication of parkland and open space. Uh, a section was removed that allowed for an STC credit of the dedication or for the dedication of parkland. Um, clarified the criteria for parkland dedication, basically what's the standards for what types of land is acceptable for park use. Um, and now it also includes language that would allow the city to require an environmental site assessment. Um, we also, let me see that, go back. Oh, wait, no. Yeah, we also clarified land education procedures, updated references and data from the parks master plan from twenty eighteen and the official population figures. Um, added a section that outlines the criteria and process for the payment of fees in lieu. Of like instead of land education and also added a section outlining minimum standards for the dedication of open space. I realize all that is kind of a lot. It's a lot of detail. So um. Where have it? Basically, questions and discussion point, and these are the three questions that. Um, that we're looking to get some feedback from you. Yeah, is there any code amendment language in this in this set of draft amendments that's confusing or unclear? Are there any amendments that you think should not be included in the current draft? And are there any amendments currently included that you currently not included that you would like to see?
So I'm reading point A already, um, for the community park, it means eight or more acres in size, so we don't even currently have anything that would.
Oh, sorry, just to, um, yeah, this is what I was talking about before here. So we changed those definitions. Yeah, so. Yeah, in the paper here, on the first page.
You got this handout before we start.
Because that that's correct, that the the sizes of those parks noted in our parks master plan were a little.
So you dropped those.
Okay.
In the two acres.
Okay, great. Basically just decided to drop all the subsections in the definition and leave it really basic for the time being. So, yeah, do you see?
See, yeah, I was just reading it on this and then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, the reason we did that is because. Well, first off, the reason that I included those is it's straight from the parks master plan, but reading more carefully, the definitions are. They're not super clear and there's, you know, one of the the neighborhood park was two to five acres, but then the community park was eight and up, so. Kind of begs the question, what are? What are parks that are five to eight called? So I mean, yeah, that that there were just some issues with those definitions and we decided to just. Strike that. Kind of confusing language and just go with the simpler definitions.
Questions on that? Everybody's good?
Right, I have a question. And this, we did, we talked about this this morning, but I still, the math is throwing me off a little bit. It's the, like, how you calculate. How much land is going to be required? It's the, like, how you calculate how much land is gonna be required. And I know you said that it actually had decreased, um, the amount was decreased, but I, I'm not sure if I'm reading, is this like in the?
Yeah, so looking at.
Yes.
Yeah, looking at. Right, so yeah, the figures were updated from, based on what's in the parks' master plan. So before, the code, or the currently, the code says that city parks' master plan currently indicates a total required park acreage of twenty-five acres. The two thousand and eighteen parks' master plans is twenty-four point four, so that's about the same, but I did update that there. Um, however, our population has exploded since then, and so that is the divisor. That's what you're dividing the number of required park acres, acres. Um, you were divided by the number um, people in town, population. And then that gives you the acres of parkland per person. So when you plug those new numbers in, it actually drops from eleven point four, which is what's required in our code now, to four point two acres per one thousand population. So that was actually kind of surprising. But um, does that make sense?
Well, hmm, I don't wanna bog us down on this. I just wanna make sure that we're not requiring too much land and lots of concern. We want the, we want, um, we want parks throughout the community, but we also don't wanna be overbearing. And I feel like you've got a good grasp on what this is, and I don't know if anybody else has questions about it, but I can dig into it more too later, but.
So, on the general thing, the nearest point development shall be designed so that no dwelling unit, as measured from the nearest point on the property line, is located more than a thousand feet. So, am I understanding that right, that essentially there's gonna be park space available for?
Is this in the plan development section?
So I was getting confused on the plan development, because that's where you're planning out the whole community.
Plan unit development?
Yes.
Yeah, trying to find that. Oh, yeah. Okay, I found it now, yes, it's on page five.
Okay.
Right, develops, developments shall be designed so that no dwelling unit, as measured from the nearest point on the property. So we included this because we just had a situation with Faraday Hills where they came in for a modification. And there was just a question, well, you know, developments shall be designed so that no dwelling unit is located more than a thousand feet from an open space. Does that mean as the crow flies? Does that mean like, by the street, street network? So basically, we are adding this language so that it's clear that from the nearest point on the property line via publicly accessible right-of-way, meaning like the way that someone would walk or drive there, that it's a thousand feet and not a thousand feet as the crow flies.
That's not in every development.
This is just for plan unit developments. Okay, sure, sure.
Then, A- Alan, the, uh, I had that question on the basketball courts.
Yeah, that's out.
As well, too. Thank you. I, I, yeah, I appreciate you getting back to me on these.
Yeah.
It's helpful. And just to know that this was the, as you said, in the quick and dirty phase.
Yes.
Hit some of the amendments, clarify things, and then uh, we just need to make sure he's on the right track.
Right, right. And this code language is, is included in almost every other city that we looked at. I mean, most cities require the dedication or the offering of parkland at the time of land division. Um, yeah, it's just a requirement. Um, I just wanna point out that there is a um, included in this language is an option for the city to accept fees if it's the development's too small or there's, you know, the land is not amenable to being developed in a parkland. It would allow the city to accept a fee instead of land dedication as well.
Quick question, Ellen.
Yeah.
The, if I'm doing the math right, so it'd basically be a three hundred and thirty people would be, just trying to figure, it's a hundred houses, basically a hundred and ten houses that would equal the amount of people, trying to figure out how.
How much that calculation is?
How much this calculation is, like, so if we have a three hundred home subdivision, that's single-family dwellings, three hundred and thirty homes.
Okay.
What would be an average size for, with seventy-five hundred square foot lots? Are we talking on that?
So three hundred and thirty homes times three people per home, right?
No, yeah, that's three thirty-three gets us to the, the thousand.
Oh, oh.
Yeah, that's the maximum density.
You gotta get, they're giving up four point two acres. Trying to figure out how big of a development that is. It's dedicating four point two acres.
So it would be three thirty times three, which is a thousand, and then times the, this factor that so that would be one, two, three, so it'd be four point two.
Uh, no, I understand that.
Okay, sorry.
Out of, out of what? Four point two out of how much acreage for, for, to do a three hundred and thirty home subdivision? Do we have any subdivisions that are approved that are comparable in that size to know the acreage of that?
Hmm, three hundred and thirty homes times seven hundred, seventy-five hundred square feet?
Yep, divided by forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty.
Oh, gotcha.
Well, I did my stuff. Three hundred and thirty times seventy-five hundred.
Fifty-six point eight two.
Yeah, what if we did this? What if we did, there's forty-five houses going in? And, and we have to count three people per house, right? So forty-five times three, so that's a hundred and thirty-five, and then we times it by.
Point zero zero four two.
Times point zero zero four two.
Yeah.
So that is.
It's a little over half an acre.
Point five, six, seven acres. So that would be three house lots, or that'd be for, did I say forty?
That's for the development.
That's for the development.
Point five, seven acres per how many acres developed?
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Five hundred times forty. That's not right.
Include the streets, you have to include the transportation grid.
Which is about fifteen percent, right away. Fifteen percent of the land.
Three hundred thousand square feet is what I'm coming up with. I can't do math in public.
We're, we're not gonna get to this answer. We have to look at actual examples.
Yeah, for the example, I just wanna, I wanna, what I'm trying to get to is for a single-family residence subdivision, what's the percentage of the land they're dedicating to the park?
Gotcha, and I think that that just depends on what type of development is.
Just say it's a single-family residence, seventy-five hundred square foot lot would work for me. Just assume they're all seventy-five hundred square foot lots with one, one house on them.
Yeah, okay.
Because then we're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna dedicate the land and then we're also gonna charge the SDCs, right?
Yes.
So they're gonna give us the new park space and then we're gonna charge them for developing new park space.
Or if they're gonna, or if they develop on that land, then they'll get STC credit for that.
I thought the STC credit was going away.
Only for the land. If they built, yeah, if they put a playground on there, a picnic shelter, that's what they get credit for, because that's the extra.
The improvement.
Yes, yes.
Gotcha, just the dedication is getting rid of the STC credit for the dedication.
Because dedication is optional now, so yeah, yeah.
Four acres per one thousand, so three.
If we don't just get a bunch of picnic areas, then we actually get playgrounds.
Some, some ball fields and. Open.
If I look off the top of my head, it costs to put an on, a covered awning with ten picnic tables under it versus play structures and a sodas pit and all that, I, I'm assuming we're gonna get ten picnic tables with awnings popped up.
Yep.
For the STC credit, so do we have a way to define?
Well, I think the STC credit would be relative to the improvement. So they would get an STC credit equivalent to the improvement, I would imagine. So if they've spent ten thousand dollars on the improvement, they'll get a ten thousand dollar credit. If they spend a hundred thousand dollars, then they'll get a hundred thousand dollars credit.
Mike, I think I have a number for you.
Yeah.
So for three hundred and thirty lots are one.
Yep.
Taking into account that transport, the transportation network's gonna be about fifteen percent.
Yeah.
We're looking about sixty-five point three acres total.
Sixty-five point three.
And then.
We're dedicating four point two.
Yeah.
We divide four point two by sixty-five point three.
Sure, yeah.
Six point four percent, is that right? Point zero six four?
That's what I was looking for. So we're gonna, they're gonna dedicate, they're gonna give six point four percent of their land to the city, and then we're gonna charge them SDCs.
They would dedicate it to parkland. It wouldn't necessarily need to be.
Yeah.
Something, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If they're doing a planned unit development, it's twenty percent.
Yeah, it's twenty percent.
Because they do smaller lots.
Just, just for comparison, yeah.
Six percent. Uh, so I guess the question is, are we on the right track? Do you want us to come back with more examples?
That's a question.
Also, we, so we have tonight, we have all the interim time. You guys can always call or email me. We also, there's July's eighth. I could come back and we could talk about this again on July eighth. That's still over a week before council or planning commission meeting, um, that would give me plenty of time to take in feedback and.
Let me ask, do you feel like you grasped that? Now, the numbers thing, don't even ask me what they just did. But I grasp the idea of what they're talking, did you? So if we're comfortable with it, I say, let's go through this, let's get it done, move forward.
So, one thing I point out is that in our parks' master, our parks' master plan was based on the population at the time. And going from eleven point four acres per thousand population to four point two, just because we've had explosive population growth. I mean, I would just point out that when it's time to revisit the parks' master plan, it's important that we decide what number is, because if we need an extra twenty-five acres of parks or something like that, then we, so that we can get that net number up per thousand, and also look at some other cities and see how many acres per thousand it is, because it, a, a reduction of more than two-thirds, when we keep hearing how critically important parks are, feels like a lot to me.
Fair enough. So we'll have another time to visit this after.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. So, I, I feel like everybody's comfortable with this explanation coming out, okay? Um, so, do you need a motion based on that?
Yeah, let me pull that up.
How would you like that to read?
Oh, actually, no, there's no motion at all. It's just a, it's a discussion, that's it.
Oh, I like this.
Just wanna hear, yeah, right, just wanna hear your.
All right, you got a thumbs up.
Okay, all right, and, and again, um, any comments, concerns, suggestions, anything, I'm all ears.
Very great, thank you for that. All right, moving to the next venture. We have the second consideration for ordinance two thousand and twenty-four, dash zero zero four, an ordinance amending chapter thirteen point zero four, water service, uh, the Estacada municipal code.
This is the second reading, so it's just a motion.
A motion to accept. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I move to approve ordinance two zero two four dash zero zero four, an ordinance amending chapter thirteen point zero four, water service of the Estacada municipal code.
Okay, I'm gonna give you a break, Sadie. I'm not gonna ask for a roll call on this one, because it's.
Second.
Got a first and second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much for that. Yeah, request to revise the IGA with Estacada School District for the sports field amendments. I think you're gonna get a unanimous yea on here, on that one, because they need it, and they're moving along. So, well, I'm, I'm in agreement. Uh, do you need a vote?
Provide some, well, yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and uh, have a motion. But I did try to provide some background in the staff report and such, so I don't know if anybody has any additional questions. But Superintendent Carpenter did bring a request to city staff that they could, we could rewrite the IGA to um, utilize, like, immediately be able to utilize funds that the city was gonna uh, provide to them for their additional sports fields. It was for concession and restroom. They're not gonna be able to build that in the immediate future. They have a grant opportunity, they'd like to use it instead, and then for that, and then they would um, fund the restroom and concession stands on their own. So if there's discussion, I know it's, it's disappointing. He said himself, and Charity might wanna weigh in on this, that it's gonna be um, not popular, because there's other things people would like to see him use money on. Um, he does also hate to give back that million dollars grant, so.
Add anything?
Yeah, so the council, or at the school board council, the school board meeting, um, he did bring up the fact that they had, uh, they were, they were voting on this grant for almost a million dollars, but the grant is only for the ball fields, only to be used for ball fields. And so, he just, Superintendent Carpenter just really wanted to make it clear that if we could use this money to redo the plumbing, we would use it for that. If we could do, do electrical, we could do it for that, but it's for that specific purpose. And knowing how many kids play ball in the city of Estacada, it's a hu, I mean, I'd probably say, other than football, it's the next biggest one, so, um, they just didn't wanna turn down that grant opportunity. And so, um, yeah, that's all the backstory there is on that, and uh, and school board unanimously voted to move forward with the grant, so, yeah.
It is in the city budget. We keep carrying it forward each year, so this would go ahead and clear that off of our books, let us meet our commitment and support their immediate project, which would also help with water conservation if that whole, um, the softball field would be re-turfed, which it is in need of, and then the baseball field would receive turf. So that would conserve water, um, and they can use the outfield for other sports, like other youth sports in the fall, too. So, I'm not sure how you feel about it, but we're hoping to.
Ready for a motion?
Yeah, I'm waiting for a motion.
I move to direct the city manager and city attorney to draft an amendment to the current IGA to allow the district to utilize the city's previously committed funds for part of the match for the district's grant to improve the softball field and baseball field with new turf surfaces, with the requirement that the restroom concession stand be completed no later than the time a bond is passed by the district for improvement of their facilities.
Second.
Okay, first and second, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Yeah, last on my list, I have wastewater facility discussion of DEQ program qualifications for financing.
Okay, okay, Elena is, um, yeah, she, we were actually, sorry. Alan was. Okay, so, um, we have the opportunity to do what is called equivalency with DEQ. And by being an equivalency program, we could get a discount on our interest rate up to one percent, which over the life of the loan is about eight million dollars. However, uh, that would mean that we would have to comply with the BABA, the Buy America, Build America requirements. Um, right now, we have applied for a design waiver from BABA. I, we won't know yet if that gets approved. If that gets approved, we don't have to comply with BABA, because they'll, they'd say you were already under design with this project when BABA was passed. Um, if we have to comply with BABA, though, that is gonna extend our timeline significantly. So, there are things that are in our project that we will not be able to buy Americans, such as the, the membranes, which is like the biggest component for the wastewater plant. We can't buy that. It is not produced in America. Um, so each and every component that we want to buy that is not produced in America, we have to apply for an individual waiver, which can take months to get that individual waiver for each component. So we're looking, if we wanted to get this discount and we don't get the design waiver, it could push it out a year to a year and a half. It will also add potentially two to three million dollars just on parts, not including any extended labor, now that we're pushing it out a year, a year and a half. Um, so the parts would be added to the initial loan, so, you know, that's also gonna discount the amount that we would be receiving at the end. I would say it's stats recommendation that we try for it as long as we're able to receive the design waiver, which we should know. They said by August. If we can receive the design waiver, that we can still do the equivalency, we can get the one percent discount, but we don't have to comply with BABA. If we can't get the design waiver, then we're looking at, is it really worth it to have a one percent decrease on our interest rate when this is gonna push our project out several months and increase the costs?
And there's no guarantee it would be one percent. One percent is the ceiling amount.
Yeah.
So it could come, come in at like, yeah, a quarter of a percent or half. So i- it looks like it, with a design waiver, there's a clear path forward. We'd have that answer in a little over a month. Um, without the design waiver, we would lose just a ton of certainty in, in our timeline scheduling, et cetera.
Just, so if we get the design waiver. Just, so if we get the design waiver, where, where, we get the discount on the interest rate, but not the requirement to purchase, is it the remaining items that we would have to purchase or none of the items we would have to purchase?
So we still have to comply with American iron, iron and steel, which was already in effect before we started the design. But that just applies to the iron and steel, which is a few like pipes and things. And that is not, our, our contractors say that's not an issue, because they've been complying with that for a couple of years now. And there's plenty of manufacturers for those products that are made domestically. Um, so if, if we get the design waiver, we don't have to comply with the BABA. So things like our membrane, we could still purchase that and would not have to go through the individual waivers. It covers the entire project.
We, we're buying every component that we can from America anyway. It's just that these membranes are, are not made in the United States, so they're from Japan, right? Yeah, so, um, yeah, I mean, it's, I, I don't want people to think we're not supporting American companies, because anything we can spec domestically, we, we're trying to. Um, but the, the, um, it's kind of the risk reward if we don't get the design waiver and our requirements with DEQ that we can complete, complete it in their timeline. It, it makes it just, oh, it takes the certainty out of the project. So hopefully we'll get the waiver. If not, then we will have another conversation with you so we can talk about some pros and cons.
Yeah, what would it cost to go over on our timeline? I mean, I, I would imagine being a year, year and a half over is gonna be a lot more expensive than a million dollars.
Hmm. I think, I mean, Steve Donovan said it would be about two million dollars is what he estimated if we want one year.
For the interest, for the additional interest?
For the additional interest for the, for the
Two.
For the loan.
For the loan.
Then we've got the, the increasing cost of construction and labor.
Yeah, the, the, our contractor said it, we expect labor to be, you're, expect to see another approximately six percent increased in labor costs. And I, we don't know those numbers yet, because it depends on how much they get done within that time. So how much labor is left after that for that additional year?
So our goal, and Elena has been very persistent in communicating with DEQ without alienating anybody, um, to follow up and, and get that, get confirmation one way or another on this design waiver, because it has to go not just to DEQ but onto EPA, and that's where, it's like it's, and one more step removed from us to have any control. So, um, I will say, I feel like this project has been, um, there's some good things shining on it, it feels like, and we're moving it forward. And so potentially we'll get this design waiver. Um, and, but if not, then there might be other ways, you know, we, we would, again, look for, we're continuing to seek grants. We've already made a request for the next, um, season at the state, you know, see if we can get some more funds from the state. Um, if, if interest rates drop later on, we could potentially refinance through DEQ or through a different program. Um, so we're looking at cost controls on every level, but this would just, this would be ideal. It would, uh, feel like a big win. But if we don't get the design waiver, it's like Peter was saying, it's just very uncertain.
Are we locked into doing it if we don't get the design waiver?
No, we, we don't.
Really no risk. There's no risk whatsoever to go forward with it, requesting the design waiver, and then if we don't get it, then we just don't do it?
Right. So it's like that, i- if we don't get it, then we can have the conversation in August. And again, like the, the more conversations that happen, the, the more we're able to understand kind of the benefits and the burns. We just, the last time we brought this up, we had so little information that we wanted to just make you aware that we had been informed of this. And then we had said, once we got that information, we'd bring it back. And, and now at least we have a timeline.
And if time was no issue, you know, we could just go for the individual waivers. Um, but it's not just pushing the time out of having the plant done. It's every time you push it out, you know, time is money. And so it's, we're losing the benefit. Uh, but we are, we'll see what happens with this, with the design waiver. Um, we just wanted to keep you on the loop, because we're pretty hopeful that it could go through.
Yeah, I think this is a no brainer. Like they said, you know, there's really nothing to lose here by waiting and seeing if we get the design review, but you know, I'm, I'm game. I'm game for waiting. And as everybody in consensus here, so we'll see how far that goes.
We'll see how
Back to us if you've got something.
How it turns out in August, and then we'll
It'd be a lot harder for me to go to the citizen, say, hey, you're held up for a couple of years. It'd be worse.
I know.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, that's all I have on council business unless it's something else.
That was a lot. Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, citizen community group comment? Do I have any more? Okay. Zoom user?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know if I Yeah, I, I think we'll hold off on that. I don't wanna take any chances. Last time was just
Yeah.
Not forgivable, so let's hold off on that. Um, anybody else wanna add to this? Nothing today, huh? You know, I look forward to our little conversations and I'm not kidding here. Don't, don't make me regret. That's it. I didn't, you know, I didn't, uh, uh, Tom McInney, um, I didn't understand a lot of what I came in on late. But I did understand enough that, that it seemed like it was gonna cost uh, current citizens of this city more money. And I hope that all of you are taking into consideration what happened to the bond. That was a resounding no, and that was a very low voter participation. So had it gone a stronger participation, I believe it would have been a stronger no. Um, at, uh, leading up to the election, probably the last couple of weeks, and Charity knows that she was at this board meeting when I spoke there. And, and it's not like I'm, you know, a pillar of the community. I died, you know, I don't know everybody, but I know enough people that it was a flood that they said, absolutely not. And so when you consider doing things, I hope that you, you know, take that into consideration that those people are hurting at this time. And, and everything I was hearing was PGE taking more, groceries taking more, gas taking more, everything taking more. And they just, they had reached their limit with, you know, and there was so much hope for the bond. I had hope for the bond because I see the need and whatnot, but everybody I talked to, you know, I'm, obviously I'm not a citizen who is on fixed income, because I have to supplement that, because it's not enough. Um, but those that, that I know are on fixed incomes are suffering, and a lot of them don't have anything to do with the city. But I know there are a lot of folks within the city limits that are struggling. So my only concern would be that you take that into consideration when making the decisions on, on costing more money, because I know you don't, you all don't like people getting angry, and everybody needs the infrastructure. I know Jonathan's really interested in infrastructure, but there has to be a consideration for, for those that are, are struggling. So just, just that, that consideration would be, you know, I would think that they would appreciate that. Thank you, sir. All right, that's all I have. Any more time to at the last minute? We're good? Okay. Then I will move on to mayor council reports and comments. I will start off with you over there, Jerry.
Um, I just wanna thank everybody for coming in today and having a great discussion. We got a lot of questions answered and, uh, staff was prepared. Um, I feel like we, um, hopefully have accomplished something with, uh, helping with the Walker disposal, um, issue. Hopefully the, they move forward and can come to a agreement and we can serve the whole community rather than just, you know, get half the community on board and then wait to see what happens with the other half. Um, I really do appreciate the, you know, the, the questions that you guys asked, because, um, you guys asked questions that either I thought about at one point, or I had no idea that you'd even ask that question. And I just appreciate you guys for that. Um, um, like I said, like I said last time, um, I feel like I'm more educated every time I leave this, leave this room because of the questions that are asked in here. So, um, appreciate you all.
Sure. I appreciate everybody that took the time to come, and I'm with Jerry. I agree. We had a great conversation. And I think that, uh, we're trying to do outstanding things for this community. And I just encourage you all to continue to be the actionable example out there in your community, be a strong reference point for people to look at so that we can help continue to raise the level of excellence around us and the barrier for our community. I think it's important, so.
Uh, well, thanks for another productive meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thanks to the staff for the time you spent on, on preparing for this, and just wanted to say thank you to the both parties from Walker Disposal for being willing to come up with a solution that's gonna work for, for both the company and for the city of Estacada and our residents. Appreciate that and have a good night.
I wanna echo that on the staff too. Um, I, I can't imagine how many hours Melanie spent prepping us on this one. Mine was at least an hour of talk time, and then the, uh, amount of time that Alan gave on this as well too. And Elena was the stuff she sent us a while ago to get us ready. Thank you so much for getting us ready for this and great discussion, everyone.
Yeah, uh, same here. I think we probably had a maybe an hour and a half conversation. It was a long so appreciate you taking the time. I know you had many other conversations to get to go over this agenda. Um, and I thank everybody for coming out tonight. Also wanna thank, um, Arrow for coming out as well and taking the time and going over their rates and explanations and being willing to step up and work with our community. And, um, they've partnered with Estacada very well and um, yeah, just appreciate all you guys and everything you do up here.
Yep. Uh, I wanna thank staff immensely for being prepared for every question and getting back to me with questions that were outlined and with answers that I can, I can deal with. Um, I appreciate that. I think so a lot. So, and then I wanna give a special thanks to Peter. I know Peter doesn't get this very often. Um, but keeping us legal and in the right lane is very important in today's council meetings. And Peter seems to do that on a regular basis. And he doesn't get much praise. If anything, he gets yelled at. Um, so I wanna give him a little extra this time around for just keeping us in line and tell him we appreciate you, sir, at the table.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And that said, you guys have a great week and a great Fourth of July. Uh, I hope to see you all out there. Uh, we've got ribbon cutting on Maine there. I, I hope you all could be there. I think all you guys out there in front of that ribbon when they cut it would just be a cast me out. So uh, ten o'clock.
Down at Fourth and May.
Yeah, you all were a part of it, so you should be there. Um, I don't know what other dignitaries we're gonna have out there, but I'm sure we'll have a few, right?
Yeah. I am not sure. Well, we should send out the, uh, the RSVP list, because it gets a little closer, but we've got a, we have a few RSVPs anyway.
Great, excellent. Well, thank you. And, uh, guys, it's over. It's adjourned.